Is there one Saturday too?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, we'll call the Stark County Commission meeting to order. Today is Thursday, September 4th. It's nine o'clock. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I'm probably gonna leave a little bit early. I've got a funeral to leave.
Okay. Commissioner Marsh, we're going to move a couple items up earlier in the discussion. And anything else? I'd like to add the proposed safety sales tax under discussion as well.
Good. Do we need to add anything from the park board?
It's, we have a commission, park board commission items.
Fair enough. Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the agenda as amended. Add second.
Motion by Commissioner Claris, seconded by Commissioner White. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. You have the minutes. We have a couple meetings. We'll start with the August 5th meeting. Any changes, additions, deletions?
I move to accept the August 5th, 2025 minutes.
By Commissioner Franchuk.
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Claris. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Then we have the August 15th special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the August 15th special meeting minutes.
By Commissioner Claris, can I get a second?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Franchuk. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Counts payable. Maybe chance to review the bills.
I have a question to my planning and zoning members. We had a subdivision review by KLJ. Does the applicant pay for that? Reimburse the county for that?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you.
Making motion approve the bills?
By Commissioner White.
I'll second.
By Commissioner Marsh. Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Park Board Commission items to report. Commissioner Marsh.
Our fairgrounds director resigned, so we will be in the process of... Okay, the fair board director resigns, will be in the process, possibly doing some restructuring. And looking on a replacement.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the...
I spoke with Todd briefly this morning. He will make sure, help to make sure everything's winterized, shut down for the season after the events. And fuel is stabilized for the winter and equipment.
Okay.
I guess we can add some discussion about the Lakeview Park thing as far as getting Todd to maybe get that ground prepped up and ready for that playground equipment as well.
Okay.
That's arriving today.
Do you have to do anything with a change order?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We do need action on a change order to the livestock building.
Oh, yeah.
And...
So that's, was that 50,000?
50,500 for tie beams. Condition.
Conditional.
Yep.
So that would make it 773, 827?
Correct.
So I'll make that motion?
By Commissioner White.
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Claris. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh. Chair votes aye, motion carry. Okay, we will, we're not gonna let anybody skip out on their recognition for service awards. We'll present that next month. We're still not gonna let...
She's not present.
If we're gonna, if people are gonna go through that, we're gonna make everybody go through that, so. Okay, I would like at this time to introduce a new county department head. Wayne Schatz is our new Director of Grounds and Buildings. I'd ask him to come up, introduce himself and give us a little perspective. Thank you.
Hi, Wayne Schatz. I know just about everybody kinda knows me, it seems like. I've been in Dickinson most of my life. I worked 26 years with six public schools. First 18 years I did recovery maintenance. The last eight, nine years I overseen all the builds and properties on the maintenance side. I've had, I guess I'm here because our wonderful, my wonderful employees both reached out to me and begged me to apply. And you guys were wonderful enough to accept me and I really appreciate it. Been trying to, I see a lot of things that need attention, trying to clean up and get things going and all that. And just really wanna say thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. I'll let you know I didn't get, I didn't have an opinion. They wouldn't let me have an opinion.
And I do work part-time at Ace. I've had, Cory is one of my great customers. He loves to come in and I see Neil there all the time and stuff, so. I don't know what I'm doing there. Everybody loves me there, too. It's hard to just give up another entity when it's, everybody like loves to have your attention and stuff, so. But thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point I'd like to move up the airport and library funding requests conversation. So Commissioner Marsh can take part of that. And open for discussion. We have the requests in front of us. The library, excuse me, has requested 750,000. The airport has requested 4 million. And I guess I would open it for discussion. Probably, let's start with the airport. Thoughts? Commissioner White, is your portfolio, do you have any?
I know for the last couple of years they've worked on this. It's mentioned at every monthly meeting that they have, their board meetings, so. You know, I've utilized the airport monthly, sometimes weekly. Our little airport is important, I think, you know, for a lot of the travelers that come into Billings County and Dunn County. Dunn County, I think already wrote a check for 2 million. Dunn County, I don't, I mean, Billings County has not, I don't think.
I haven't heard if they've done anything.
It definitely gives us an avenue to leave Dickinson, but that's where I'm at.
I would, if I could add some comments. Overall, I've been very concerned about the cost of this whole project. It's, seems to be a lot. But that said, and I know that there's promises of future services, you know, potentially a second flight out to Minneapolis or whatever. And that's not gonna be attained initially, but unless they build this airport this size and get this all done, we'll never get that either.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's, it's an investment in the future.
We did have Delta here for a short period of time, and I think they left right at the peak. They bowed out and left. I mean, that was, if you're a Vikings fan or like to go to Minnesota, so that was, that was a great opportunity for a lot of us. But it's just not here.
I guess... Don't pick up passengers in Minnesota and bring them here, do you?
Yeah. I would echo what Commissioner Claris said is that in all the brief, you know, meetings and conversations I've had, cost has always been a concern. I think it's not a perfect formula. I think it's good. They're doing the best they can. And I also think it's critical for our area to have a functional airport with the ability to get the second gate. I think that's critical. And we're, you know, I think boardings and, is going to go up. And I guess the thought I had is some kind of a formula where maybe we give them, split that payment over two years.
Yeah, and he did mention that would be, that they would, that would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, the $4 million, I struggle with that.
It's a big, big bite.
Will we, as Stark County see, I mean Dickinson sees the benefit of it, you know, Dunn County does, Billings County. Will Stark County see the benefit of the $4 million investment?
Yes, I think over time they will.
So it's a 20, they figured it'll be good for 20 years. You know, this upgrade before we outgrow it again. So I mean, you divide that, $4 million by 20, I guess that, that's a different pill to swallow. But that's $4 million still bothers me. It's not my money, but I still like to spend money like it's mine and be conservative.
It's obviously an interest of the state. You know, they're putting up $20 million to get this thing going in the right direction. That doesn't happen every day in a community our size, so that's a good thing.
It is a good thing. I'm not saying that we don't need it, that it would be a benefit. I just struggle with that dollar amount. For a total or upfront? Well, upfront, definitely upfront. For a total, it bothers me a little bit too, but if we can absorb it over two years or whatever we can break it up with, I guess I'd be more inclined to go with that.
Are you looking for a motion?
Well, I'd like to listen to Commissioner Franchuk first. I guess, like you said, with the 4 million, I had seen you two have talked about splitting it, you know, I could see that. We split it over a two-year, three-year period on there, but...
Four years?
I don't know if they wanted that, I think they have to pay the bills by then, but, yeah. I've been in, sat in on some of the planning they've done on the, on the building and that. I definitely think we need that, physically, to move forward.
And I think they've also done a few revisions on it to get the cost as low and still have a nice feasible building for everybody to utilize.
Any other discussion? If not, does someone have a motion?
So the first payment be if we made a motion 2026? The next one would be 2027?
And if you do make a motion, I would say let's put some kind of bar. You know, that, hey, the 2 million is payable at some stage or whatever, you know, once they have 6 million into it or 8 million into it.
Form of completion.
Yeah, so that we're not bankrupt in this in the beginning. We're paying in arrears is my one man's opinion, but I think that's...
I mean, I think, I mean, initially they were, I mean, they've got the funding to build the majority of this project. I mean, this additional funding come from the counties is parking lot, right? It's all those ladder stage type of things.
Part of everything. I think they're a little short on the building itself too, aren't they?
I think so, but most of that's been covered. I know when he was up here, he did mention the parking lot, the runway. There was some of that money that was going to that, but I know, I have a hard time doing a 50-50, you know, 2 million, 2 million. You know, if we can make that first year less and then the final year, you know, that, we know it's coming. So we can plan a little bit more in 2027 when it's closer. So maybe like 1.75 for the first year. And then the rest on in 2027.
Okay. Again, looking for discussion or a motion?
Do they have a completion date?
It would be in '27.
Yeah.
Ladder stages of '27.
After completion, we would give them our last check.
It's up to the board.
Well, if you're making that motion, what would you? I would, I would say the last payment doesn't go until the project's completed. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so when is the first payment made? Let's just pick a date.
How about just when they break ground?
Break ground.
Okay, that's fine. They might break ground this year, right?
Well...
It's gotta be in '26.
In 2026, if they break ground this year, January 2026.
Okay.
Lot of variables there.
Cory, do you wanna put your motion all together?
I was just gonna read between the lines.
All right, so I, my motion is 1.75 million for 2025. And that will be given at the breaking, when they break ground. If they break it this year, it'll still be January of next year. And then the following would be at the completion of the project in 2027.
You said 2025.
Oh, 2026, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then following would be 2027.
January.
Okay.
For a total of 4 million?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Claris, any other discussion? Everybody comfortable with the splits as presented? So the motion is 1.75, no earlier than January 1st of 2026 or upon commencement of construction with the following 2.25 million at completion of the project payable in 2027. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And if they don't complete it by 27, we drag it out to 28?
Let's play with, let's figure that out when we get there. I mean, they're telling us they'll be complete in '27.
And I trust that.
Do we hamstring them in any way by waiting for completion of the project?
I doubt it.
I doubt it.
Okay. All right.
Okay, graded vote. This would be a recommendation to our budget meeting on the 16th where we will formally adopt this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Thoughts on the other project in front of us, which would be the library? Commissioner Marsh, it's kinda your...
I, I don't know if I've said it before, but I do struggle with the, some of the spending policies they have, even though this has not come into their normal work. But I mean, when the bills are presented to us for approval, they're already paid. And so, I mean, we're not approving anything and I struggle with that. And so that's where I struggle here. I mean, we support the bookmobile. I'm 100% for that. We support some of the other libraries. If some of the other libraries come up to us wanting to do improvements, I mean, are we gonna set a precedent here and put money to them? I mean, I struggle with that and with the $750,000.
How vital do you think this new addition is for that library?
I, I would say in my, I guess I've never looked at it that way. 30%, 40% as far as what, you know? I don't see where they're struggling for room, 'cause if you walk through there, I see shelves that could probably hold more books. But libraries are changing in the way that they're run anymore, you know? There's more online stuff and they're doing more events for young people, which is good. I mean, so they mean some of this new space is dedicated to that. And some of this new space that I see also that I brought up in their discussion is, you know, the soil, right? There's an issue with the soil on the addition that they wanna put on, which is gonna be a huge cost to them. Because it can't support the... Correct. The building. Or the new design or, and I don't know if that's, I struggle with that part there.
And we currently, as a county, we currently give a library about 325,000 annually. And this supports the bookmobile and things, programs like that.
Operations.
Okay. And this, this funding request doesn't go towards operations.
No.
Completely for the build.
Yeah, I'm kind of on that we have a lot of big fish to fry in our future. And I don't, my opinion is I don't see an immediate urge for 2026 that we get all in on this when we have a lot of other things going on. We just made a huge commitment that's gonna, to something that is substantial. So I'm kind of in the arena of, you know, pushing it back further discussion, maybe a year. Also, you know, you know, the, the city does have a revenue stream to help them a little more than we do. And that's kinda where, where I'm at, so.
Anybody else have anything else on that? Yeah, like I said, the only issue that I have is building a structure on the soil that is gonna cost a lot. That's a huge chunk of their cost.
And that's an unknown number at this point?
It's not a book, right? So it's, it's a building.
Yeah. Anything else?
I guess, I mean, I would, until I hear of more compelling evidence that this is really necessary, I would just as soon table this issue until, you know, later time.
Well, no motion equals tabling it, which is the same. So if, I'll ask for a motion a couple times. If we have none, we'll move on. So does anybody have a motion on moving forward on the library funding request? Second call for a motion. Third call for a motion. Hearing none, we will move on. Bernie, is there anything else you wanna move up here?
Not unless you want to visit about the city's proposed sales tax.
Okay, we can certainly take that on it right now. I see Mr. Dossinger's here. Did you, are you just listening or are you...
I'm just listening unless you have questions.
Okay, well, it's, I would, I guess I would ask you to come to the podium and discuss the proposed public safety tax, if you would please. I know I could, maybe caught you off guard, but you're, you're a good public speaker.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm member of the commission. We're proposing 1% of public safety sales tax to go on the ballot. We got approved at the last city commission meeting for discussion and move forward with it. We'll be drafting a resolution and bringing that forward to the commission for approval. And then the next step would be to get it on the ballot in June.
What does this 1% look like dollars wise?
Be approximately about $7 million.
Would it be annually?
Correct.
And the current resolution says 80% to the city, 20% for the county?
That is correct for public safety needs.
Public safety, but no...
Be police, fire, EMS services, emergency management.
Can you tell us what that 1%, what's gonna, what's being collected? Not food, grocery store stuff, right?
Yeah, I don't have the list in front of me, but not all items are taxed. It would still follow the North Dakota sales tax laws. Certain things like motor vehicle purchases, obviously it's not taxed.
So then...
It's taxed 5% to the state, but nothing to the city.
The 20% that would go to the county, that would have to go for, like to the sheriff's department or to fire?
It would come to the city, to the county commission, I'm sorry, to decide how they would like to spend it on public safety needs. So it could go to the rural fire departments, sheriff's department, jail needs, emergency management. However, this body would decide to use those funds.
Our potential subsidy of the ambulance would be one of those as well?
That would, yes, correct. We would, there would not be in lieu of that, that would be part of that.
So how did the vote go at the city commission for that?
We had a discussion to move forward with bringing back a resolution.
Okay, so that was not, that you voted on, it was just a...
That is correct. A formal resolution has not been presented to the city commission yet.
Do you anticipate coming back before us once the, I mean, I got some questions in the back of my mind. You know, do you anticipate coming, I'm assuming you're gonna come and want county commission support. At that point, maybe we can ask some questions. I could ask mine right now.
That is correct. I could certainly come back after we have a formal resolution drafted and presented to the commission approved. And I can come back to this, to the county commission to present that as well.
Okay.
I anticipate in October.
I think that's early enough for me. Anybody want more information now or...
So you wanna get this passed before January and start these taxes in January 1st, or what?
That is not correct. It would go on the June primary.
Or it has to get, yeah, that's a good home rule for the...
It has to go to the vote of the people.
Right.
So you said that was 8 million approximately?
Seven to eight.
Approximately about $7 million.
The 80, 20 split, how was that, Cory, after that figure?
How we come up with that?
Yes.
You know, we sat down as city staff and thought that would be a fair allocation.
I think the county has 26% of the population.
We can always, we can always go down to 15%.
Let's say you're going up to 30.
It always, depends on what you guys do with the library funding and the airport funding, so we can certainly negotiate.
Well, you, we did commit 4 million to the airport.
That's good, I'm glad to hear that.
You didn't come in that.
Walked in late, it must've got moved up on the agenda.
We did, we did, so. Okay, any other questions, comments?
I was just interested in how the discussion went with the city, so.
I just think part of the overall discussion's gonna be, is that a lot of people are gonna want, people are gonna want this to look like a property tax reduction, not just an additional, you know, revenue source for, you know, for other items. We don't have any say in what the city does with their share. That's, that's up to them, obviously, but that would be part of my deal is, is how are we gonna allocate and reduce property taxes within reason to accommodate this? If it does make sense, because sales tax is a much broader, more, not safer tax, but a more balanced, fairer tax.
Yep.
And if we can focus on that thing, I think I would certainly listen to that conversation.
So what are the rules on this tax, what this money can be used for?
As far as, the recommendation would be our resolution did include public safety needs. So for the county, it would include rural, rural fire department, sheriff's department, emergency management, those, and EMS services.
Headcount? An additional headcount can, or is it property, physical stuff that you purchase?
I think it would be up to us discretion.
Okay.
So it would include operational costs.
Yeah, so if, let's just do simple math. If we get 30% of 7 million, we get 2.1 million. We could take a million of that and deduct it from the sheriff's budget and fund it through that.
You can do a lot with 35%, can't you?
That percent keeps going up, doesn't it?
All right. Okay, we'll try to maintain level here, so. Okay, any other discussions or questions for Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we'll resume on the normal agenda. Sheriff's report, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. You have my report in front of you, I believe. If you have any questions on that, please feel free to ask. In addition to the report this month, I did wanna report that we do have a new hire for Lynn Welk's position of the warrants clerk. Cassie Mahusky is actually gonna fill the warrants clerk position and the civil position has been filled by Kim Kleinlochter. Was selected for that position and she will be starting in late October. Schools, of course, are back open again, so we're out doing that. You can see we already had 54 schools on patrols this month in August. K9 usages, I just, I wanted to make a note of that, the way we're doing that. Just to remind you guys, our K9s are both on a power shift, which is two to two. And we're seeing a lot of more usage that way, I guess, than having them on shift work if you compare to some other departments. And I can speak from the experience with that. When I was on a power shift with my K9, it was a lot more usage. I mean, obviously that's the peak time, so two to two, and we're doing a lot more traffic stops and seeing a lot more of that sort of activity out there. So that's working well. Dogs are very good. Our new dog, phenomenal. We had NDPOA last month, which, we have a canine challenge within that that we have every year. We've had it for, I think this was the 20th annual canine challenge. Our new canine, K9 Keno, won that challenge this year, so very proud of them. It's not very often you see a brand new dog do that. It's not very often you see a brand new dog do that, so very pleased with, with our program as it stands right now. We have Kind Hearts Day on Saturday at Legacy Square downtown here from 10 to 3:00. Commissioner White has volunteered to donate his time grilling food. Thank you, Commissioner White. Obviously, Commissioner Marsh will be there. If you watched our really well put together professional video we did. And certainly, the rest of you are welcome to, to come and help. Anything's appreciated. If any employees of the county want to come help, we would love to have them there as well. Again, that's a free event for everyone in our community that wishes to attend. There'll be free burgers, free brats, free pop, ice cream, bouncy houses, lots of activities, the fire department and EMS, or excuse me, yeah, EMS, as indicated, they will be there. We will be there, of course, with that as well. And one more thing I was gonna talk about was the public safety tax, but you guys already touched on that, so appreciate the efforts of the city on that. I think, in my opinion, sales tax is Mr., or Commissioner Messer alluded to as the fairest form of tax, and I think that'll be a good thing for our, our community, being that we are an interstate community, we are a tourist community, where we are the hub of southwest North Dakota. A lot of people come here and utilize our services, and that's a good way for them to participate in paying for those, so. Any questions?
I just have one. Do, can we get the CMV citations updates monthly?
The truck rig?
Yeah, for citations.
What have I, just been sending you the fines and?
The permits that they've purchased.
Well, the, I think the fines are on there as well, with the permits, if you'll look at it, but I can break that down a little bit further for you.
Okay. They're only listed as permit fees on there. I was looking at the overloads and the trucks weighed, and then also the collected fees for overloads.
And I did bring some information you requested here as well, Commissioner Franchuk. Yep, I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. County Road, Mr. Miller.
Todd Miller, Stark County Road Operations Specialist. What we've been doing for this last month here, has been hauling material again, as always. We've been hauling, oh, we did 14.2 miles of scoria and gravel blend mixture. Shale, we did 16.7 miles, 31,000 yards. The gravel alone, just gravel, I don't have that up here on the list, but anyway, we've had 16 miles of completed roadway as well. 2025 material placement, I don't know if that slide is available or not. I thought maybe I had it added, but anyway, I would, if anybody ever wants to see that, I have that on my GIS system, showing where the material placement has been for the last oh, six years, I think, where we, so we can keep track of that, so that's available. We're also doing cattle guard replacements. We have a couple of them that have been replaced. We had, taking the narrow ones out, I got a crew working on that as well. Hate to bring this up, but anyway, it's salt and sand. We've got that for winter season, we got it all mixed and ready to go. The reason why we did that is I thought there was gonna be some tariffs added to the salt and found out that they were not, there's no tariff on salt being brought in from Canada, which was good. So that's all taken care of, ready to go for this winter. Culvert replacement, we did, there's a culvert replacement on the Stark County Billings County line, which you can see the slide, what it looked like, and then after, our next slide should be the one that is what it was when we got it completed. So that section line is available, open for access for them farmers to use, so. That's been completed. Also, I'd like to bring up, we're hosting a North Dakota LTAP training session, which would be on October 9th, and that'll be held at the Extension Building, the Dakota Room on that day, so that's all lined up with North Dakota LTAP. Oh, there's my slide for material replacement. So all that is like where we did crack ceiling, all the shale and all the gravel and all that, or the areas of roads that we've done so far, and some that are planned. We're gonna be moving into the Richardson area soon, and then back over to Bellfield area as well, and there'll be some more segments added there, so getting quite a few miles covered in the county. Projects, moving forward here, flex funding, I have chosen and prioritized five bridge replacement projects. So the DOT, I'd requested that, and I got those five. One is in the city of Bellfield. Lehigh Drive is one. Another one is north, located north of Richardson, and then we have one north of Gladstone. And then we have a bundle of bridges that are tailored in Gladstone and Richardson area as well. And those are the top five for replacement and flex funding.
And what was the deadline for applying for that? Okay, thank you.
And then we also have two, two mile road segment locations for improvements. One's located north of Bellfield, and then one located north of Richardson. And Northern Plains Engineering is working on that for us. We also did, we were gonna do road inspections this week for our chip ceiling projects, upcoming chip ceiling projects, but we had to postpone that, and we'll be tackling that next week, Andrew and I, on those. On 131st Avenue Southwest, south of Bellfield, that project is near completion. And then the South Heart Bridge replacement is completed now, except for some fencing and some grass seeding and that kind of stuff, but we can't open that road up until we have that inspected. So that'll be opened up next week sometime, hopefully. 110th and 33rd project is, we had pre-construction meeting, and we'll be starting that project up here in, I think in a couple weeks, and I think Jeremy will talk on that as well here. And then we're starting our bridge project replacement over in Grant County, that bridge that we have to take care of, that will be torn out on Monday. They have already started, we have the fence boot, and we got a detour put in place, so that, just in case there's an ambulance call or fire call to the Gunches residence, that's available, ready to go. West Broadway project, that'll start here in September, around the 22nd of September. And then I got one other item, and if you can bring that slide up, it's a fee schedule. I'm requesting for your approval to adopt this fee schedule, and I'm open to any comments about it or questions that you may have, and take a look at it and see what you guys think.
So where are the big changes in this?
Big changes would be the permits, our, our current permit price is like $25 a permit for putting an approach, and it will bump that up to 250. And then temporary approach permit would be $100 unauthorized approach would be fined at 1,000, and possibly, I don't know, on the bottom of the fee schedule here, we have $7,500 for an occurrence for unauthorized approach and utility installation, so that would be a fine as well. This is basically the same thing as McKenzie County, and the reason why I wanted this to be adopted is that we've had requests for laying flatline, which is a temporary water line, and most counties charge for it, we never have, but that would, that's gonna be coming up, Corey can elaborate on.
This is a fee that is most, is charged with most of our surrounding counties. The only thing I think I would change on this is the unauthorized approach or utility installation, move that from 7,500 to 2,500.
And I would agree with that.
So if, when you say unauthorized approach, are you talking about a farmer building an approach off of this section or the county road into his field?
Without a permit. Yep, because we have a permitting process in place, we always have, it's just that there was never a fine for?
Even if he or she incurs 100% of the cost?
Right. And maybe?
I don't know, I'm just thinking that that's a little sharp, especially producers. I can get some of these other ideas, but.
But we have a permitting process.
We can change this.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying, this is new, and I'm just wondering, you know?
So what's the difference here on, on the approach permit, and you've got it also down here for approach, right? That's a Stark County property? Is that like coming up a Highway 10 or something, or what are you talking about?
We're talking on all county roads for permitting process.
Okay. So what's the difference between, oh, on Stark County property down there? So what's the difference between the unauthorized approach at 1,000 and the unauthorized approach in utility installation at 2,500?
That's weird. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't just have just unauthorized approach at 1,000, and then the utility at 2,500? That can be changed.
Got it. Maybe and, put the word and in there.
Okay, we can do that.
So we're kind, we're consistent with neighboring counties?
Correct, yes. Yeah, Todd, Todd started working on this a couple months ago, pulling information and data.
Okay, and this would be on our website as well, so people can go look?
Correct, yep. And they can look at it, and I'll have that put on there, and then I'll have to update our, some of our permits to include this as well.
Okay.
This is long.
Comments?
You guys approve of this.
Action, what's your wishes?
We need, we need a motion for this approach. I'd make the motion to approve this permitting fee schedule with that one change to 2,500 from 7,500.
Correct.
That's second.
All right, Commissioner White, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote just for, Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried, thank you.
And that's, I think you guys as well, that's all I have.
Thanks, Todd. All right, Mr. Woods, or Wood?
Morning, just a couple brief updates, kind of carryover project from this, actually last year and this summer, the paving and seal coal project on 32nd, 107. Still trying to get the last of the few remaining documents from the contractor, so we can finish that out. Really nothing new to report, we're still waiting on those documents on that one. 131st and 48th, Todd, you kind of mentioned that the, the 48th Street portion is done, the 131st portion should be, I would think, finished up next week, so that one's going pretty well. And last but not least, the 33rd and 110th, Martin is looking at starting that possibly next week. I kind of heard they might get delayed a little bit, but the next couple weeks, that should get underway. So we're coordinating with fences and utilities to get out of the way before the contractor gets there, but that should be started construction pretty soon. And then the, the flex funding, we're working with Todd on those applications too, so those are due the 19th of September, like mentioned, so we'll get those applications in and, and see how that turns out. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Krebs, KLG.
Good morning. I'll also give you a brief project update. So for our roundabout project, we've been working with the landowners on right away negotiations, and so, so far two have signed, and then there's one remaining on that one. The draft environmental document, that we're still waiting on the ND DOT for review too, that one, as a reminder, it is scheduled for 2027, and there was, with the size of the project, we weren't able to move it up, so it'll, it'll be bid for 2027 construction. On the structure placement, just west of South Heart, so the contractor, they're finishing up the project, the box collar's been installed, the grading and topsoil's done, the county completed the graveling and their seeding remaining, so one requirement from the ND DOT is they, they'd like to see the roads closed until the bridge gets inspected by their, their engineers that they hired to do that. So I've been keeping HDR in the loop, and they're planning to inspect it next week, so hopefully we can open it up next week. Also, so progressive estimate one, that was approved, and then we just sent in progressive estimate two to the DOT for approval. I checked this morning, and they must be reviewing that yet, since it hasn't gone through. The West Broadway overlay project, we had the pre-construction meeting on July 30th, and they're just planning to start towards the end of September. And then we also completed a final plat review for the Muckel subdivision for Steve. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments?
Is there any issues with the one landlord that hasn't signed yet, or is there problems there?
They, we've been working with Amanda on this now. They just got some terms and conditions that are a little unique, I guess, that were, so they're, they're, they're working through it, and they're drafting up a, a document, so hopefully, once that comes back, then we'll have a meeting on it, I guess, to proceed forward.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Not, thank you, Mr. Krebs.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, Mr. Emel, you want to come up and address the board on the section line issue?
Good morning Commissioners, thank you for this time. If it's all right, I have a.
You want to state your name again, please?
Darrell Emel.
Okay, thank you.
I have a handout with a satellite view of the area I'm talking about. I'm speaking on behalf of the Five D's Trust, of which I am a member that created the trust along with three of the four other members present. As the trust, we are the owners of the southeast quarter of Section 22 and all of Section 27, 13899 West. We stand before this commission and request the issue in order to restore the fence line along 46th Street Southwest, between the southwest quarter of Section 22 and the northwest quarter of Section 27, and along 29th Avenue Southwest between Section 21 and Section 22 to the vertical plane of 33 feet off the section line. In reference to North Dakota Century Code 24629-1, page two of your handout, gives the commission authority to do that. We also refer to North Dakota Century Code 240628, obstruction of section lines prohibited, and is also at the top of the page two of your handout. We also refer to North Dakota Century Code 242609, removal of pernament instructions. It's also on page two of your handout. And a letter of opinion dated January 18th, 1997, by Attorney General Heidi Highcamp to Botno County State's Attorney, that the North Dakota Supreme Court has held fencing as an obstruction. That is referred to pages three and four of the handout. Also, North Dakota Century Code 240703, section lines considered public load, public roads open for public travel, closing the same under certain conditions. Those conditions are, that code is on page nine of your handout. So a brief history of the area out there, in about 1970 or thereabouts, our dad made improvements to 129th Avenue Southwest, from our farmyard north a half a mile to 46th Street Southwest, and for a half a mile to the east on 46th, so they would be passable, and also so that he could cut them for hay. Before he made these improvements on 129th Avenue, at the farmstead, there was a creek to go through, and there was a hole at the section line from the east side of the section line to the west side, so that was only passable on foot or horseback. Since he has made those improvements, now a vehicle can drive through there with no problem, and it's being used quite a bit. So on about July 29th of this year, Mr. Richard called our land renter, and as I understand, he asked. And as I understand, he asked our renter if he thought we would share in the cost of moving his fence. Over to August first of twenty-twenty-five, I talked with Sarah in the tax department. And after she did some research and called me back the next day, she told me the vertical plane has not been ordered. Or vacated for either area in discussion. So then August fifteenth, I was at the farm and the fence on Forty Sixth Street Southwest has been moved to eliminate the vertical plane of the thirty-three feet. So the fence was put, moved down to the middle of section line. And on the note, the fence on Hundred Twenty Five, Hundred Twenty Ninth Avenue Southwest between section and Twenty One and Twenty Two was moved. In either twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-three, I'm not sure of that time. But that also eliminated the thirty-three foot vertical plane in that section line for one mile. On Forty Sixth Street Southwest at the quarter line, which is a half a mile to the east of Hundred Twenty Ninth Avenue. The new fence line has closed the gate that was there. So passage from that section line beyond is limited to an ATV only. You cannot get through there with a pickup or a truck, et cetera. Unless Five D's Trust re-locates the gate to the other side of the section line. Now, on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, a report by Mr. Todd Miller to Mr. Corey White. After inspection of the area of which I have attached to the handout. That's page ten and eleven. So then, then on August twenty-sixth, Mr. Richard made his first contact on fence, on the fencing line in question. And his comment was, he said, we should just close all the areas in question and eliminate all public access. Okay, so for the reason, for our request is that we are in negotiations right now for the sale of our southeast quarter of Section Twenty Two. And the only access point is on Forty Sixth Avenue Southwest, which is now illegally closed. If Mr. Richard would have contacted us earlier, he would have been informed of this possible sale. Might have changed the decision on moving his fence line. Now, North Dakota Sex, North Dakota Century Code Twenty Four Seven Oh Three in part reads. And that refers to closing section lines in part reads does not deprive adjacent landowners access to the landowner's property. If the sale goes through, access will be denied. So also, North Dakota Century Code Twenty Four Twelve Oh Two and a letter of opinion dated June eighteenth nineteen ninety-seven, those are on pages six, seven, and eight of that handout. More clearly explains the prohibiting of obstructions in a section line, rights away, and penalties for violations. And another reason for not closing the Forty Sixth Avenue Southwest line is that five states operating. An oil company is doing some development at Rocky Hill Field and currently has four drilling pads on Forty Fifth Street, as I have noted there. And their history of their putting pads every one mile. They do not do the two-mile horizontal like most companies do and they're only doing one mile at this time. What they're going to do in the future, nobody knows, except them. So in essence, we would like this commission to issue an order to, or follow the North Dakota Century's code. Issue an order for fence lines to be moved for thirty-three foot setback and things taken care of. I thank you for your consideration and I'm open for any questions. I hope I can answer them.
Very detailed, so very good, thank you. Any comments or questions?
When was the last discussion you had with Mr. Richards?
The only discussion we ever had with him was on August twenty-sixth of this year. Roughly two weeks after he moved the fence line and through the grapevine, he got word that we were going to request a time at this meeting.
Has he, so he hasn't reached back out to you to offer to move it back at all?
Nope, nope. The only thing he said during that conversation, when I told him we were negotiating a sale. He says, well, if I have to, I will move the fence line back to the original thirty-three foot setback.
And that was on the August?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
You said the north-south section line, that one mile, is now currently on the center line?
Yes.
And he did that fence?
Yes.
And did, well, you don't own Twenty One, so don't know if anybody participated with him on cost in that regard, so.
I, I, I do not have any knowledge or can't answer that.
Yeah, no problem. And I think you also stated that the east-west line on the south side of the southwest quarter of Twenty Two. Which he has now moved to the center line, right?
Correct.
For a half mile?
Correct.
Okay, is that section line being utilized in any fashion? I mean, it's not a two-track trail, it's, it's just grass at this point, used for maybe, like you said, four-wheelers or something like that?
Yes, it's basically a grass trail. There is not a worn two-track trail there.
Does anybody use that?
Hunters use it quite a bit in the fall. I use it to get back to that quarter because after Dad made those improvements, it's like driving down a field, other than the molehills that have developed over the years. Which is a lot easier and faster than going through our pasture to get there.
Okay.
Is there any dispute as far as where the section line actually is?
As far as I know, not.
The, the, yeah, I think this is one of those should have been a good neighbor scenarios, right?
Yes, yes. If Mr. Richard would have called us before we took action, he would have been informed of our potential sale and that we may need to have that open.
Yep.
If I would have been in his shoes, you know, peeking in hindsight, but if I would have been told that, I wouldn't have moved the fence that was, that would have cost me X number of dollars. Until that transaction either fell through or progressed and paper was signed and money was changed hands.
Yeah, I agree. So my only, oops.
Was there a fence there previously or was this unfenced?
Nope, there was a fence there.
On each side, two fences?
Yep.
Going north and south and east and west, there was two, two sets of fences?
Yep, there's, I can remember my parents moved to that farmstead, used to get the bottom page of Emel Farmstead, they moved there in. Oh, nineteen fifty-four, I believe it was. March first, I don't remember that date, but I think it was nineteen fifty-four and all of those section lines in their north, south, east, and west had double fence, so they, they had a thirty-three foot setback. So there was the sixty-six.
So there was a point of reference.
Yep, so, so there was always a sixty-six open line for the county to come in and build roads or make improvements, whatever they made.
Currently, there's just one fence now.
Right.
Pardon me?
Just one fence now, current.
Or is your side still fenced?
Our side is still fenced.
And that's why it's much narrower for the four-wheeler size to get through, okay.
Yeah, if you drive down there with a pickup right now, in thirty feet with the long pickups they make nowadays. You have to make a number of movements to get turned around so you can come back to Twenty Hundred Twenty Ninth Avenue.
Have you asked him to move his fence back?
I have not.
You have not?
No.
The, I think part of it too is there is a little bit of conflict in the statutes that you state. Cause you own the land to the metal of the, of the section. And the thirty-three feet on each side is county right-of-way. It's, it's not easement, it's not deeded, the county doesn't own that. And on one thing, and thank you for bringing that forward, in one area it references that. The construction of fences may not be considered an obstruction, yet there's another language that you've also provided where it says it is an obstruction, so. And, you know, I, I, I can't, good fences make good neighbors. I, I struggle being in the property ownership business. I struggle denying someone use of their property if it's not being used for the county right-of-way. And, you know, I mean, so if we tell Mr. Richard, take his fence back to the thirty-three feet line, of which you are complying with that. Then is he denied the ability to use his thirty-three feet by that quarter mile or half mile in that quarter? You know, it's, it's, it's conflicting language. Again, good neighbors make, or good fences make good neighbors and he should have been a good neighbor. I just, you know, thoughts on that at all?
Yeah, on page three of the handout, it says the North Dakota Supreme Court has held that fencing with the section line easement is an obstruction. If done in violation of certain provisions which allow a Board of County Commissioners or Board of Township Supervisors to grant written permission for such fencing with limited parameters. Goes on for the say, and this is a letter by then Attorney General Heidi Highcamp. Therefore, is my opinion that fencing within the section line easement is a permanent obstruction. So it's.
Yeah, there's, there's a conflict. You might get the current Attorney General to say something different than Heidi Highcamp said.
The Supreme Court, North Dakota Supreme Court decision made already. So that overrules any Attorney General's opinion, whatever, unless they go through the complete litigation again and.
Or get permission from the county or township board according to the, to the ruling. Right?
I don't understand your question.
Well, technically, the fence is an obstruction unless the applicant makes an application and the county or township board allows that applicant to put the fence on the section, middle of the section line. Not that.
Correct.
Which, which was not done here. There was no application to us to do that.
Yeah, there is a procedure for closing a section line. And it has to be presented to the county commission. They have to hold an open hearing on it and vote on it. This has not been done through, for whatever reason, you know, we can't answer that.
So you're asking today for this board to require the fence to be moved both on the east-west and north-south fence or just the east-west fence?
Both, because they are in violation of, of North Dakota Century Code at this point.
I really appreciate all the information you brought here. It's very well done. But I don't know if our state's attorneys had an opportunity to chime in on this thing. I mean, I don't disagree with your point, your position here. I, I, you know, with the information you presented here. But same time to, you know, make a drastic ruling here without, you know, further consultation from our attorney, state's attorney here. I think it just, for, just caution.
Yep.
Little bit of consideration from her unless she's online, but I don't know if she is or not, but.
What, what I, what I'll do is that when she, when she's available, I'll get this to her, this packet. And I think my recommendation was to, is to make one call to your neighbor, you guys have been neighbors for years. And, and ask him, you know, if he had moved that fence back, you know, and see what his response is. I mean, you guys, you guys have been neighbors for many, many years, so. And this will give us some time to look at this as well. And, and I'll get it to Amanda, which I think she's, I don't know when she's back, so I'll get it to her and to review it as well. But in the meantime, Mr. Richards, I, I think, I don't know. You guys had the discussion on August twenty-fifth, you haven't had a follow-up discussion. Maybe a phone call just asked him to move it back to where it was and there's a possible sale pending and he may just go move the fence.
Oh, he knows, he knows of the pending sale.
Okay, and maybe a simple question of asking him if he'll move it.
Well, his comment was, he said, if your sale goes through, says I will move the fence back, which is. I guess he would have to regardless. But I'm looking at the fact now that he is doing something which is illegal until he gets permission from this commission.
Correct.
Do that. And, you know, it is punishable, it is a, what do I say, it's, it is, it is a. A class B misdemeanor, I think it is, or it's a misdemeanor for fencing something in without the proper closing by a county commission.
And in the past, we've had some of this come up and we've always had our state's attorney look at it as well and advise us as well beforehand. But nevertheless, go back to Mr. Richards and making that call and it's, it's okay to have a conversation, conversations are free to have. So, and have him, ask him to move that fence.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm all open to talk to Mr. Richards, but seeing how he is the one that is not following the state constitution right now. He should be the one making the inroads to try to get this clarified. Or straightened out, whatever you want to call it. He's never done that, he just, I'm just going to do it, period.
Yeah, and I, I live in, inside the city limits and I've had crucial conversations with my neighbor about fence lines. You know, and we, at the end of the day, we're neighbors, you know, and his, his fence fell over to my yard and, and, you know, we've had to have those discussions, but. And after a discussion was had, changes were made too, without involving other people, so.
Okay, I think we can do that. You, we can get this to the state's attorney, I think.
I should, I'm on Zoom. I should be back tomorrow, so I can look at it quite quickly.
Okay, thank you. So we'll get, that was Amanda. She'll take a look at it.
Scared us all.
Yeah, and so we'll have that taken a look at and, and then we can get some further guidance on this statute-wise and all this other kind of stuff. Cause her job is to keep us out of jail, so. So we'll, we'll try to do that. We appreciate your time this morning, presentation. Any last comments?
Nope, I guess, you know, we just have to look at the facts and, and handle them as they come forth and, you know, right now it's a violation.
Appreciate your professional and unemotional presentation.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I have dealt with various boards in the Bismarck area before, so, and I've sat on board, so I, I know you don't get personal or anything like that, you just state the facts. Thank you much.
Thank you.
One comment too, that we got several dams back there.
You want to state your name, please?
My name's Don Emel.
Okay.
I'm with the Five D Trust also, that we have several dams back there and with the oil going on that we could sell water. So it'd be nice to have that section line open.
If you need to develop it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. All right, we have a scheduled ten o'clock public abatement hearing. And I would ask the applicant to come forth, state your name and.
Nathan Stittleberg with the Niasse Law Firm on behalf of the property owner. What we have here is a dispute about value and we're here requesting that the commission confirm the city's abatement for twenty-twenty-three and the corresponding tax refund. So a little bit of background, client purchased the property back in twenty-one for one million five hundred seventeen dollars. Or one million five hundred seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. It was an arm-length transaction, it wasn't a foreclosure or anything like that. The, they had the property appraised in July of twenty-two and that appraisal came in at two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The twenty-twenty-three true and full value that was assessed was at four million two hundred and ten thousand, I believe, eight hundred dollars. What we're here requesting is that it be confirmed that the actual true and full value is the actual appraisal and the difference is one million, like nine hundred and sixty thousand. is the actual appraisal, and the difference is one million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred. It's important to note that the city did their own voluntary reassessment in 2024, bringing that true and fair value down to two million, eight hundred and forty thousand, six hundred, and I believe that value was based on a bulk appraisal and estimated rents. Now, in the, after the purchase, that property has since lost access to parking as well. As this commission probably is familiar, there is a 2020 Supreme Court case, RMF, TREI, Jefferson Apartments, that lays out that the true and fair value cannot exceed its market value. And the city has approved the appraised value and has actually directed us to continue to work with their city assessor in setting the value moving forward. They base that decision on the actual appraisal, appraisal value that was done in 2022 to carry forward for the 2023, bringing that value down. So it, I have Melissa Wheeler here, if you've got specific questions regarding to the specific property. Chris Niasse, I believe, is on Zoom, he was actually the attorney at the city meeting that can discuss any discussions that happened at that city meeting, and I believe we have as well, so.
I do have a couple of questions on the property.
Okay.
And I don't know who would best. State your name again, ma'am.
I'm Melissa Wheeler, I'm the North Dakota Property Manager for Sadiq.
So there's how many units in this project?
It's, there's forty-seven.
Forty-seven units, what's the mix? One bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom?
It is, there are three, four bedrooms, six two bedrooms, four one bedrooms, and the rest are three bedrooms.
Okay. So if you take the, and I see Mr. Hirschfield's here, if you take the two-point-two-five-oh and divide it by forty-seven, you end up with what, about fifty? Got to do a calculator, fifty thousand a unit or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I would ask the question, Joe and I have had a lot of conversations about multifamily stuff, and why is this one different at fifty when most of the stuff I see or I'm involved in is seventy and eighty thousand a door?
Well, first of all, there is no parking access, it is limited to a more affordable income versus the properties that you deal in are priced differently. So we are in affordable, we are not HUD or Section Eight, but we are affordable housing, meaning most of our rents are below a thousand dollars. So, I mean, it's a def, also too, when this building was built, it was not built with full-size kitchens, it was originally built for DSU, so it has a smaller stove, has a smaller dishwasher, has a smaller refrigerator, the rooms are, most of them are ten-by-ten because they were meant to be for student housing. So with your multifamilies, they were built with the purpose of having individuals living there as individuals for families, whereas this was originally built as a, almost like offset during the oil boom for students. So the spaces within this multifamily definitely do not compare to the spaces that you would normally deal with.
And that would equate to a thirty-five percent reduction in.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, the truth is, I mean, most of these rooms can fit about a queen-size bed, I mean, there's no kitchen, the kitchen and living room is shared, so there's no separate space for dining, most people have a very small table, or, you know, they get a larger apartment to get a living room and an extra bedroom. So, I mean, there's different ways that people have configured these apartments, but the bottom line is most of it doesn't fit into the normal standard for housing.
Well, I would argue that a three and four-bedroom unit is going to, and value would more than make up the difference in a small.
I only have three, four bedrooms, how do you say that three, four bedrooms?
I'm just saying, it's part of the, it's part of the equation. I mean, I can drive you around downtown, and there's a lot of parking-challenged multifamily projects here.
Yeah, there is, I would agree, but they don't have forty-seven units.
Well, of course not, but the fact of the matter is, if you're going to fifty thousand a unit, I, I think that's a struggle, I'm going to be knocking on Joe's door tomorrow on everything else, because I'm going to ask him to take the stuff which is at seventy-five or eighty a door or higher, down closer to where this one would be at.
Okay, so when they did the assessed value, it was two-point-eight, where does that put us for?
Sixty thousand.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're already undervalued at two-point-eight for the assessment based upon your.
Yeah, but you're asking for two-point, we're not talking about two-point-eight, we're talking about two-point-two-five-oh.
I think, first and foremost, if we back up, I think clearly the four-point-two-plus assessment was way over what it should have been, okay? Going back to that Supreme Court case, market value is basically synonymous with true and full value here. The city does not have any appraisal, it is a bulk appraisal from which to base that valuation on, and it was an estimate of rents. We are providing an appraisal dated, I believe, July seventh of 2022, that is being applied going into the 2023 tax year. That appraisal in and of itself establishes a true value that we need to base it on, we can't base on, based on that Supreme Court case, you can assess over that appraisal unless you've got some support to justify a higher value, at which point the city didn't have it, they realized and actually dropped that taxable value down the following year, based on their own self-review. So I think the issue here is you've got an established appraisal establishing a value back half of that year going into the requested 2023, we don't have any additional support to justify a value higher than that, and that's where I believe the city came and ruled on that.
Ms. Hirschfield, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have something pertinent to this that is, doesn't necessarily, well, it applies to this property, but it doesn't pertain to this property. An email I received from another property owner here in town, and their response back to one of my staff members was, thank you for your response, what is the process to once again protest your findings and evaluation? It was proposed at City Commission that valuations cannot be overvalued over the sales price or appraised price that a professional appraiser does. Is this something that can be prevented or presented to staff, or does it have to go to the commission level? Again, thank you, but I disagree with your evaluation. North Dakota values are based on true and full value, you know, market value as the applicant said. Within that state statute says we are to do a sales ratio analysis of the sales that occur and value set at a median, so in the middle. Based on that, fifty percent of the sales are going to be assessed above their sale price, they're not to be assessed to their sale price, fifty percent are to be above their sale price, fifty percent below. Now, within that state Board of Equalization, or the state board, does give us a tolerance to ninety percent, so that helps drop that back, so there is no requirement to be at the sale price. Certainly no requirement that we meet somebody else's appraised value. Everybody on my staff, I've got four Class One licensed appraisers, so we are licensed as well. With this property here, the, every property in Dickinson is, with our mass appraisal, is cost-based, so we input exactly what is sitting there to arrive at a value. We use the sales in to determine depreciation, make any adjustments to our cost manual to make sure that we are meeting that median value. So with this property, the four-plus-million-dollar valuation was based off what is sitting there and what properties they're selling for. Is it a little bit high? Well, it might be a little bit high based on income, as the applicants are saying, and certainly when Vanguard came through in 2024 with a twenty-three review, they thought it was a little high too, and they dropped that to two-point-eight million. But all of our apartments were a little bit light, I left it light to be conservative because we ended up increasing all of our apartments in 2024 again, and I think we're at three-point-six on this property currently. So swinging back around to the evaluation that's the applicant's applying for, nobody has said that the property hasn't been accurately valued or reflected that on the property card, so if it's not the physicality of the property, then it has to be something outside of that. What does not allow that property to generate that amount of income? Now, the first thing we throw out is management, I mean, there's good managers, there's bad management. That property was mismanaged for years and years, I'm not disparaging the applicants, we're just saying what that property was when they purchased it. So it's likely they got a good deal on that property. It was not arms-length, it was purchased from a bank, a bank is not an owner. Or, I mean, it can be the owner, but that's not an arms-length transaction, and so it wouldn't have been used in our analysis, so it's going to be a below-market sale already. And so then the next statement, why doesn't that property earn if, you know, if it's something outside of management? Well, the parking might be a consideration for lower value, if I can't find a place to park, you're probably not going to get top rent, we'll acknowledge that. However, for the date of this, February first of 2022, for the twenty-three evaluate, or twenty-three, the, they didn't lose their parking until later that year, so as of February first, they still had their parking, so that shouldn't be considered in this valuation. Moving forward, most definitely, we'll have to see whether, you know, the lack of parking has affected rents, that does need to be considered, but for this one, it should not. And moving forward to today, after the valuation that Vanguard did for us for twenty-four, they backed value off from four-point-two to two-point-eight, that was a conservative value for that year, but maybe it's, you know, in line with what the market was for 2023. And so, you know, I, for being fair and equitable, I still think our four-point-two reflects how we valued every property in Dickinson. However, I'm open to, you know, reducing that value back to two-point-eight. We can certainly go with what the applicant's requesting, what the city moved forward with, that was their decision, but it really concerns me that we go out and change values to what a certain appraiser brings forward, because all that does is open the door for everybody then.
Yeah, so the 2023 valuation that you had on the books was four-point-two-one-oh.
Yes.
Then the valuation you have on the books for two, for 2024 was two-point-eight?
Correct.
And the valuation you have for 2025 is three-point-six?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I. I agree, I wrote down, because like I said, I'm in that arena, there was no way that that sale in March of 2021 was an arms-length deal. But having said that, you know, the three points we talked about, you know, replacement, market, and income, should all play a role in establishing what's a fair value for these folks. I know you throw out management, management is part of value in my world, in my world. I mean, if it's not properly managed, then you're not going to, the owner of the property is not going to get, if he or she elects the seller, is not going to get fair value. So that, in my world, it does play a part of that. And you are making an application for only 2023, correct?
That is correct.
And? Any other questions? Now, two-point-eight and then three-point-six.
Okay.
I just think that's a big leap for the rest of the multifamily property taxpayers to go down to two-point-two-five-oh. It's not fair.
Well, and then the next part of that is, we reduce that to twenty-three, but what's its current value, you expect that management's better, rents are going to go up, more rooms are full, they're going to see a larger increase, whether that's a good reason or not, but certainly the building is what the building is, that doesn't change.
Right, we can only speculate for future purposes, right? So. You had a comment, Nathan?
Thank you, I just want to clarify one thing that was brought up, and that is, we're still contending it as an arms-length transaction, it was purchased from Dakota Bank, but it's my understanding that it was not acquired through any type of foreclosure sale or other auction sale, just because it's a bank, it did not run through NDCC 570227. So I think that is a bit of a mischaracterization, I can see where you can jump to that based on the seller, but my understanding is it was not through typical channels that a bank does acquire this property. It also came, I believe, from prior owner, they lost their parking, they actually, this other issue is not before the council, but they have a shared common space with another one and all of that, so a whole other laundry list of kind of issues that further encumber this. I believe Attorney Chris Niasse was in Zoom and attended that meeting. Chris, was there anything else discussed at the city council that you would like to just chime in with regards to rationale of how we got here?
Yeah, I guess a couple of points. Number one would be to clarify how the property was acquired, this was a warranty deed from Dakota Bank, this was a property that, and I understand the commission is probably generally aware, but this was a property developed by Mr. Brinkman, and it came with its host of problems, it was, as Ms. Wheeler said, this was a property that was developed with an eye toward housing DSU students. I guess I, this was not a foreclosure sale, I think the sale from Dakota Bank to Sadiq Management is an arms-length transaction, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't compelled in any way. And I guess the other point I have to make is, we're working with an actual appraisal that was issued the middle of twenty-two, and I believe that the holding of the Jefferson Apartments case, which was a Stark County case, is controlling here, that, and I'll just quote from it, "True and full values in excess of a property's market value are invalid, inequitable, or unjust." And, you know, I think the floodgates argument is inappropriate, because we're talking about actual values that have actually been determined by appraisers. If we're looking at the weight of the evidence, I think the actual appraisal value of this specific parcel in 2020, midway of 2022, certainly, you know, it hits pretty center of the dartboard. And the city, I understand that they worked with a bulk appraisal, but you'd have to make assumptions that that is not, that their assumptions are not directly related to the actual characteristics of this property. You know, it is, it is instructive that the city itself reassessed at two-point-eight million. I think what I characterized at the city meeting on this was, it's a good start for this property, and two-point-two-five is center of the dartboard as far as we're concerned for 2023. Our initial request was for twenty-one and twenty-two as well, we provided some information that a previous attorney had sent in requests for abatement of twenty-one and twenty-two, the city did not, did not grant those, so I don't believe that those are at issue here today, but 2023 is the one that I think it's, I think, I don't think it's too big of an ask on this one, it's a forty-six-point-five percent reduction, dollar amount is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars of an abatement request and refund for the 2023 tax year. And the city directed us to work with Mr. Hirschfeld for 2024 and 2025 property tax years, because this is a unique property, and I guess I take the reassessment as a tacit admission that it was too high. And I appreciate your time on this, if there are any questions for me, I'll gladly field those.
I'd like to chime in just a minute here, this is Attorney Al Stagg, I'm on Zoom. Mr. Niasse, I'm looking at the Supreme Court case, and you're correct, it is a Stark County case, but where the Supreme Court got hung up on that case was they stated that the reason that the abatement, the refusal of the abatement was improper, was because it was quite fact-specific, it was because the assessor had. It was because the assessor had essentially stated that those properties would not have sold in 2016 for the assessed values. And the Supreme Court said that they had to look at all of the evidence. That's not happening here. So when the the county commission has every ability to listen to, yes, the evidence that you're providing them right now, but also to the assessed value that is being provided by them. And that's where the true and fair market value comes from. So that one was a fact-specific case.
I'm not arguing that it isn't fact-specific, but so is this one. And I believe we've actually provided the facts related to this specific parcel that justified the the abatement and reduction that we've proposed for 2023. So I I'll gladly get into discussing that case if we need to, but I think letting it stand for its holding is 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 fair for the purposes of this county commission meeting.
Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Attorney Mr. Commissioner. Just one more thing that I want to add to this. We hear about the 2022 appraisal. I don't have it in front of me, but, you know, our 23 valuations based on values of 2022, and you hear 2022 appraisal, that's got to be, you know, close. But what what is the timing on the comparables used in the appraisal? If they are 2018, 2019, 2020 sales through COVID, and for a 2020, 2022 appraisal, that doesn't reflect the 22 market. That reflects a market prior to 2022. And the appraiser who did that appraisal used the best data he had, but it may not reflect the 2022 market. And that's all I want to add to to the the appraisal that was done. Let's stand for any questions that you have.
Okay. Is that the appraisal?
It is.
Okay.
And it was provided with our packet. The the commission should have the appraisal. I apologize to the city for providing such amount of materials here, such a bulky amount. But I felt it was important for you to have the full appraisal for 2022, and it was midway through the year. So we can, we can dial in which properties were the comps. I mean, I'm scanning through it right now. So we have that information.
Okay. We're
I actually found it, if I may.
Well, we're going to struggle without having it in front of us. We do not have that in our packet, and we're going to struggle looking at those comps and doing the analysis that personally I would do, whether I knew of the sales or not, whether they're, you know, some of them may be. I just worked on one with a commercial deal, and the guy had seven comps. And six of them were out of town when there was one in town, and three of them in town that he failed to put in, that would be a lot better comp. So, you know, the 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 appraisers go through an immense amount of certification and education to get to that point. But the appraisal's not a, appraisals aren't a perfect world just because of, and mass appraisals certainly aren't a perfect world, so.
Well, and and one more item, if I may, Commissioner. At the abatement part, we're in the to back up, you know, the Board of Equalization meetings that we have, the informal, this is formal process. We have the the informal process. So they they could have come forward earlier with this. Certainly, the prior attorney had contacted us a little bit, but didn't pursue it. Nobody's saying that the value, that this building has been entered in correctly, that there's an error on this property card. So any change in value has to be done as an adjustment to the market. And that that information isn't physical, and it and it could be, you know, with with the parking. But, you know, it, what is it about this location? You know, what is the income? If we don't get the income, we don't see that this property is not generating. So we're going to assume that this age building is going to generate the same amount of income that other similar buildings will. I mean, that's the nature of mass appraisal. And and so to to move forward from 23 to 25, nearly 26 here, and say, well, we know all of this stuff about that now that you didn't know then, and you should have been able to correct it then, not with without the information here. So with that, I still believe that we have a fair and equitable valuation on it based on the information that we had. If they'd come forward and say, oh, there isn't 47 units, there's 37 units. The building is two-thirds the size that you have. There's a correction, there's an error. You know, that's how you can get the value down, but that's not what we have here. We're saying there is other information that we have now that you didn't have then to correct this value, and that's not fair and equitable.
If I may, before Mr. Hirschfeld leaves the microphone, you know, I guess my only point to that would be that we're only looking at the 2023 abatement right now. And that value was established at 4.2 million. But our appraisal was in July of '22, just a few months prior to the establishment of the 2023 valuation. Now, I mean, we're, we're not casting dispersions at at the process that was used before, but we have, we have accurate information. And I do believe that the Jefferson Apartments case is a valid holding that says, when you have that information, it's it's true and it's correct, and it's right to go back and make make the adjustment. And that's why the process is set forth in statute, and that's what we've done. I mean, if we were just coming in here saying, you know, I I think the the estimation is wrong, and we didn't have an actual appraisal, I think all of these other discussion points would would have a little more tread on the tire. But we've got the best evidence, which is the actual appraisal completed just a few months prior to that tax year. So I guess that's our request. It's right there in black and white. I have a little myth that our packet didn't get into the commission agenda packet. We did submit it. It's 100 and, let me look here. It's 148 pages, and that should have been before the commission.
So
Available to commissioners.
Yep. So trying to move this forward, I don't disagree that 4.2 million in 2023 was too high. I mean, I I would probably sympathize with you on that regard. But 2.25 is significantly way under market. The, you know, and again, we need some direction and motions here. I guess my recommendation is that the 2023 value be somewhere between 2.8 and 3.0. And then 2024 is already established at 28, 2.8, and they still have the ability to appeal that if they wish, correct? And then 2025 is at 3.6, but we're only dealing with 2023 here. So any other questions or comments from the other commissioners, board?
So 24 is established at 2.8? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would you feel better about this if you had an opportunity to look at that appraisal? And
Well, I think it would help, but I don't think we have that ability. I think we have to make a decision today on this, on this appeal. If I understand statute as as
I thought you had it, so I only have one hard copy, if that helps?
Well, I mean, I don't think it's a five-minute review on 120-page document. I mean, I would look at the comps. That's what I'd like to do. But I'm just going based on the information we have in front of us today. I still think 2.8 to 3.0 is the fair number for 2023. In 2023, you had the parking, extra parking, or no?
No, we lost that in '23.
You lost it in '23?
And actually, it was never so
During the year of '23?
During the year of '23, we lost the parking.
But the assessed value of 2023 is established early in '23, like February 1st or whatever the date is, Mr. Hirschfeld.
And we lost that probably around early spring. So when that parking was originally given, there was actually, we don't own the lot. So during that time when Beaver Brinkman and Shell Thompson separated, and they went through that litigation with Dakota Bank, DSU had an agreement with Shell Thompson to use the parking lot across the street. After it was purchased in '21, it was managed by in in somebody in Dickinson. It wasn't until '23 we actually took the property back and did not use a third-party management. And that was when I stepped in in '23. When that happened, Shell took that parking away. So we've never owned the lot that the parking was, it was an agreement made with DSU through Beaver Brinkman and Shell Thompson during the construction of this property. So when the property was purchased, that parking stayed in place. But then when it was no longer through, I guess, the management that was managing it prior to the sale, our parking was removed. So the lot itself was never owned by us, nor was it ever when it was constructed owned by us. That was part of a deal that was made between Beaver Brinkman and Shell Thompson.
Okay, thank you.
I'll bring Joe back up one more time, if that's okay. Are you in agreement with the 23 appraisal at 2.2 million?
I wished I'd brought my copy of that with me because I had a lot of notes in there. I I did not. I know that I was not. I did look at the the comparables real quick. They are current comparables, but one of them is comprised of all efficiency and and one-bedroom units that was distressed when it sold. It wasn't in foreclosure, but they were, it was about to go to receivership, they were about to lose it. So you're not a good arms-length transaction. I I want to check the the address on one of those. I want to say is a foreclosure property, but maybe I've got it mixed up with another. And so again, it would have been maybe the the sales that were available, but not, you know, an arms-length market transaction would have been another distressed sale. The other two I'm not familiar with off the top of my head. So I I'm remembering that was a big part of what I didn't like about the appraisal was they they weren't arms-length transactions. I mean, they they were distressed, they weren't earning what they should have been.
Yeah. I think the Raven Ridge ones were definitely a distressed sale based on the information I can recall back in 2022.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, and there's other comps he could have pulled. I mean, he only pulled four comps here. There's certainly more, maybe not in volume of, you know, of a 47 unit, but there was 18s and 24-plex units that sold that could have been brought into this, so. Yeah. But we have what we have in front of us. I don't know if anybody else wants to take a look at this later.
Commissioner, this is Attorney Niasse, if I may.
Go ahead.
I just want to point out that the appraisal that was presented to the commission, the the 2022 appraisal, that was acquired in furtherance of financing. And so that was offered by Sadiq to support. I don't know exactly which which loan it was, but it was to refinance the property. So that was used in good faith for other business purposes as well. So Sadiq would have loved it if it was higher, I'm guessing. I mean, that would have, that would have made the financing easier, but that was the purpose for that appraisal.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well, I will make a motion. I will move that the 2023 assessed value be established at 2.9 million.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Any other comments, discussion?
23, when was the the property purchased? What year was that? Was it 20?
2021.
21. Then 2025 is 3.6 right now?
Yes, and 2024 is 2.8.
2.8.
But we're only dealing with 23, so. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. I don't know if I should go first, but Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. Motion to establish a 2.9 is passed. Okay, we will take a 10-minute break and be back here at 11:00, or excuse me, 10:54. Oops, she has it right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought maybe Natalie would have said something, but I don't see anything.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't think this is even
Hi. Yeah, I'm sure they did. I think, I think the challenge is
Well, I'm not Jesus.
Yeah, we can do that. There, that's where the safety sales stands. Like an ambulance, you get a call every time you have an ambulance, right? You get a charge. Do I get charged if the ambulance comes to my property and picks me up?
If they transport me, yes.
Okay, so if they just treat me at my house and say, okay, but if they take me to the hospital? We should do that with law enforcement. Hey, I get I get a fine for getting picked up for speeding.
It's getting better, but it's still
Wait, honestly, we're 287G now. Pass horse, so we get Miller.
Oh, wait, wait, you know, like crazy.
Oh, you did that, too?
Already funny.
Already.
Not 100% 3DS, you're like a pass. I don't know if you got the same notice, but they'll pay Doesn't mean this is like you, or pay for it and say, hey, we're willing. They narcotics pass horse for price. Well, this isn't even a grant. This is just, yeah, we we decided to play a ball with them and now they're throwing money at us.
We will reconvene the meeting. We will reconvene the meeting. And at this point, I would ask that the Home on the Range come forth and present their request.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you today. I do have a slide presentation that the computer guy's working on.
You want to state your name while we're waiting?
I do, I'm Laura Feldman, I'm the Executive Director at Home on the Range, been out there for thirty years, born in Beach, and returned home after I said I never would, so here I am, I love it. And it's going great, okay, so I'll just, oh, here we go. So I'm gonna hear, I'm here to visit with you a little bit about who Home on the Range is, who we serve, how we serve, I'm gonna talk about our new school that we developed and started June third, twenty-twenty-four, and I'm gonna hang up on my husband, how rude, and tell you what our future plans are. And the next slide will tell you about who Home on the Range is. So we're a residential treatment program. We were opened by a Catholic priest in nineteen fifty, and we serve boys and girls ages twelve to seventeen. We are awfully unique, we are also a working cattle ranch, we're just down the road from you, mile marker seven, I don't know if any of you have come to the Champions Ride Rodeo, but we we put on a PRCA rodeo first Saturday in every August, and it's it's a, it's a wing-dinger, it's a great show. Our kids are boys and girls, and they come primarily from the state of North Dakota. We, actually, I'm gonna pull it up on here, then I can see it and I can tell you. We do, we're known for doing good work with with teenagers. We do a lot of adventure-type therapy, so we've got experiential therapy as well, where we work with horses and dogs. Our canine program takes a rescue dog and does basic socialization and obedience training, and then they're involved in putting them in forever homes. Our kids get a lot of therapy out of that, there's so many correlations between our kids and rescue dogs, it's it's a beautiful thing to watch. We do a lot of bottom-up programming, and that's programming that isn't done from your brain down, it's done from your body to your brain, so we'll talk about that in a little bit. So, yeah, that's, that's what we do. One of the things, one of the assessments that we give all our kids that come in is called an ACE assessment, and the ACE assessment assesses childhood traumas that have taken place. And so out of a score of a possible ten, these traumas would include things that happened to you, things that happened around you, or things that didn't happen for you. So this would include sexual abuse, if your parents are incarcerated, suicide in the family, mental health issues. And so it was originally done in the seventies as an obesity study, they wanted to know why people were becoming more and more obese with with the population. And what they found was, the more traumas a youth, a person experienced, the more likely they were to have, have issues with health, more heart attacks, more strokes, more cancer, those kinds of things. And so they continued to study that, and what they found was, with an ACE score of four or more, you're six times more likely to commit suicide. With a four or more, you're forty-seven times more likely to inject lethal steep drugs, you're seven times more likely to be an alcoholic, twice as likely to have heart disease, cancer, or diabetes, and be obese. And with an ACE score of six or more, they tend to say you can lop off twenty years of your lifespan expectancy. On the next slide, you'll see, nope, the one before that. Our kids' average ACE score for our girls, when I pulled it, was eight-point-two, and our boys was five-point-two. And I want you to also know that kids under-report their ACE, because that lifestyle is typically so normalized for them, that they don't even recognize it as a trauma. So when we were talking to one of our girls who scored a nine, and she said she had never been sexually assaulted, but later she's talking about how she was passed out at a party one time, and a boy had sex with her, and we said, well, we didn't know, you said you weren't sexually assaulted. She said, oh, I wasn't assaulted, I was passed out. So those are the kinds of kids that we get coming through our doors. Next slide. Something that is really important to advocate in my mind is for our sex-trafficked youth. Now, North Dakota defines sex trafficking as a recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, obtaining, patronizing, or soliciting of a person for the purposes of a sexual act, in which a commercial sex act is induced by fraud, or coercion, or in which the person has not turned eighteen yet. The amount of sex trafficking that we're seeing our kids experience coming through our doors is atrocious. These are just a few vignettes from from kids that have actually been placed with us. One of our girls was sixteen, and she was actually placed four times with us. And on the, on the last time she was placed, her mom sold her to her drug-dealing boyfriend, and the, the male performed sex acts on her with her mom in the same room, and then the girl watched out the window as the mom received drugs in exchange. Now, this is a girl who, during the four times she was with us, we would send her on home visits, right, because that's what you, that's what you had to do, and she would come back always high and in worse shape than before. Because of regulations outside of control, she was placed at home to mom, but come to find out, mom was selling her every time she went home, which is why she got worse and worse. We had a fourteen-year-old girl who was sold by her mom to obtain propane for the winter, and then come to find out that that was a generational issue, that both her mother and her grandmother were also sold. We had a sixteen-year-old girl whose mother was trafficking her out of a hotel, and her brother was keeping track of the money earned. A sixteen-year-old was admitted to Home on the Range for the third time, after a neighbor of a hotel in Montana heard a young woman screaming. The cops arrived and went in and found the young lady not well-clothed, with adult felon males, and high on meth. When we look at our numbers, we started really looking at sex trafficking in twenty-eighteen. So from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, when we surveyed, when we took a look at all of our youth, we had concerns about seventy-nine percent of them being trafficked, and these are our North Dakota kids. We then kind of redefined, it became more specific when we were looking at our trafficked youth. We identified a specific assessment tool, we started doing legislative work, we had Senate Bill twenty-three forty-one go up, which would have allowed North Dakota to have a sex trafficking specific program for youth. And I learned what death by fiscal note meant when we did that, and they reduced it to a study. So we improved our data collection, is the good news. And when we surveyed, or when we took our twenty-twenty-three girl numbers, we had concerns, suspected or confirmed ninety-seven percent of them as being trafficked or exploited. One of the girls that year, we didn't have any concerns about. Suspected means, confirmed means that they have an open legal or law enforcement case or they self-admit. Suspected means there's enough red flags that we really think this has happened, and typically, those suspected kids are ones that are smart enough not to say enough to get confirmed, not to have to be involved in legal issues. So I feel very comfortable saying, you know, seventy-five percent of those kids that year, those girls, were were trafficked or exploited. On the next slide, it was interesting, when we were gathering our data in twenty-three, how many of our males we had concerns about. National statistics say about forty-four percent of males in the system have been trafficked or exploited, which is really about right on what we had concerns about. We also suspected another twenty-six percent, and we actually had one male that was confirmed, a young, a young boy who was actually with us twice. We only didn't have concerns with about twenty-five percent. Let me, oh, this is the male data, here we go. That was the girls, I apologize. So, yes, in the, with the boys, we suspected or had concerns about sixty percent of them, my apologies. So who are our kids? Our kids are your kids. Between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-four, we served thirty-nine Stark County kids and families. And that comes from DJS, Division of General Services, from the human service zones, or from what's considered voluntary placement, where parents maintain custody of their kids, but they're able to place without a custodial agency. So thirty-nine of our kids in those four years were yours. We serve doing bottom-up programming, I mentioned earlier. We do sensory work with our kids to get them in control of their bodies, so that they can then get control of their brains. Traumatized kids are reactive, because their brains are actually wired differently. So we get them in control of their bodies, so that they can then access their brains. We do a lot of specialized groups for our trafficked youth, including Ending the Game, My Life, My Choice, Becoming Me, and Self-Defense. We do a lot of evidence-based, so research says this is the best product out there. We do Girl Circle, Social Emotional Learning, SABISA, which is a drug and alcohol program. Our experiential groups that I mentioned earlier, we do a lot of equine work, which is really my favorite. I've been at Home on the Range for fifteen years, or for twenty years, and spent fifteen of that working with dogs and horses and kids. They will tell you it's therapy without being therapy. Humans have not been safe for our kids, and so you work with them with animals as our co-therapists, to teach them about relationships, to teach them about safety and boundaries and communication and teamwork and organization, and then you adapt those skills into their their human lives. Adventure therapy, rock climbing, we do trauma-informed yoga. As I said, we're a working cattle ranch, so the kids are also involved in feeding. When calving season rolls around, it's a favorite. They do basic mechanics, construction work, we've done a lot of remodeling, the kids are involved in that. They can get jobs in the kitchen, they can get jobs as tutors in the school. We also have a spiritual component, as I said, we were started by a Catholic priest, we're non, we take kids of all faiths, of course, but we offer a number of spiritual opportunities for them, including Bible study, prayer group, we have a number of guest speakers, and we have church and go-on outings also. When I talked about the relationships that kids develop, just when you look at these pictures, I find them to be really powerful. I mean, these are kids who have been horrifically, all of these girls have been horrifically trafficked, and don't find safety in human relationships. But they're able to make connections and feel positive self-regard and confidence, growing with their ability to form relationships with these critters. It's always amazing to me when you have a hundred-and-fifteen-pound girl scared to death of humans, and then you put her with a two, thirteen-hundred-pound horse, and it's like instant connection. It's instant safety with this huge animal, right? Oh, that came through weird. So ACEs affect education. There's a lot of research out there, some of them talk about how children with three or more ACEs are five times more likely to have attendance issues, six times more likely to have behavioral problems and drop out of school. Children with more ACEs have significantly higher risk of poor academic achievement, deficits in their cognitive functions. um, deficits in their cognitive functions, uh, significantly increased likelihood of having been suspended from school, lower grades, and chronic absenteeism. I can tell you a number of the kids that come through our doors, um, haven't been in school for months, sometimes years. Um, we've had kids with fourth-grade reading levels come, and actually, it was our girl that was there four times, whose mom trafficked her, um, to her drug dealer, but she hadn't been in school regularly since fourth grade, and she was able to get her GED with us. Um, so, uh, we certainly see that all of this evidence in our, in our kids. So we decided it, it wasn't working because prior to June twentieth, June of last year, our kids were in, um, public school. Uh, what we found in public school was it wasn't a good mix for the, for our kids. By the time our kids get to us, they've been, um, significant trauma, complex trauma, and they've been, um, the kids that we're getting now are much deeper end with mental health needs, um, acuity-wise than they were, say, ten years ago. We're not getting just the kids who have a drug and alcohol problem. We're getting the suicidal homicidal kids that, um, have drug and alcohol and parents incarcerated, and I mean, the list is long. Uh, and it just wasn't a good fit for our public school. So in November, we thought, hey, we should open our own school, and in June we did. Uh, Badlands Learning Center has been open for over a year now, um, and it's, it's seeing great results. Um, and so the reason I'm here to speak to you is because last year, um, Dunn County opened the door and invited us to speak to their county commissioners, and they granted us three hundred thousand dollars to get our school off the ground. Um, and we were ever so grateful, and that allowed us, uh, the opportunity to do so. Uh, and so we went back to Dunn this year, and then we went to McKenzie County, who granted us five hundred thousand, um, and now you guys are the lucky ones to be next, so we're here. Um, since June third, twenty-four, we've had, and this is as of August twenty-eighth this year, we've served eighty students, um, we've offered a hundred and ninety-six classes, uh, ninety-eight credits have been earned, and three youth have earned their GED. Uh, we also do cer- certification classes, so, um, one of our boys had completed his GED but took four construction management certification courses and got that under his belt as well. All our lines are, all of our courses are through, uh, Center for Distance Ed with North Dakota Department of Instruction. We have an onsite special ed teacher. Uh, we had an OT, an occupational therapist, but she fell in love and moved away, so that didn't work. Uh, we have paras, uh, in the classroom, um, and it's, it's been an incredible success. When you compare it to what we were doing at Beach Public High School, um, at Beach High, less than a third of our kids were getting any credits at all. And some of that's because you can only give credits at Beach High for a full semester. Well, our average length of stay is only four months, and so kids weren't coming in May and leaving in January. That just wasn't happening. Um, so as you can see, only five percent of our kids haven't earned credit, so that means ninety-five have. Oh, there we go. Um, credits offered, uh, through Beach High compared to credits earned, um, seventy percent of the kids did not earn, or seventy percent of the credits offered were not earned, um, and now with us, um, less than, less, like ninety-eight percent of our kids are getting credits, are earning the credits offered. So I think it's always important to hear what the kids say, right? There are consumers, there are customers, um, and so they, I had them journal a little bit for me, um, and you can see here, you know, um, my experience with school before coming to Home on the Range was awful. I hated school. The school at Home on the Range made a big difference. I graduated with my GED, and now I want to go to college. The people here that take their, there's people here that take their time to help me and understand what I'm learning. It's a very peaceful place. This young gal was one of the vignettes that I mentioned earlier, uh, and she, she completed her GED and, uh, is going to cosmetology school and keeps in touch with us. So, um, it does make an impact. These kids haven't had educational success, and they come to us and they have the opportunity to do that. So we've learned some things. We have a building, um, where we had one classroom prior, and so we've, um, we've managed to, because we wanted to see for our first year if it would be successful as we thought it would be, and it's blowing the doors off our expectations. Um, so we've learned some things in the last year. We learned that it is a huge success. Uh, we learned that we need an additional classroom so that we can fully separate our boys and girls, and, um, that would allow us to gain our training room back, uh, and it would have more permanent separation. We have one classroom that's divided by bookshelves, and it's for girls, and I don't know if any of you have daughters, um, but there's a lot of drama can travel over bookshelves. So, um, I've got four, I know. So, um, our current goal is, is what we're doing right now is fundraising for an addition, uh, to our school building that would allow two separate classrooms for girls and two separate classrooms for boys in the current classroom. It'll create an outdoor learning place and also a kitchenette type of area that's not an industrial kitchen for the kids to learn, um, independent living skills. Here's our, our plan. You can see the white part is what currently exists. Um, the red line on the right-hand side of that, that's where our bookshelves separate our two girls' classrooms. Um, we would permanently create a wall there, um, and then the yellow will be the addition, um, where we will add the two classrooms. Um, you can see the, the learning commons, um, the kitchenette, and a couple of offices and a, and a sensory room. Um, while our OT was single and with us, uh, she developed a, a sensory room that's been very effective for our kids in school to get them back in control of their body, to get them regulated and ready to learn. Uh, what we have raised so far, um, no, this is our expenses. So the total expense of the project is three point two million. Uh, no, that's, no, the one before. Total expense is three point two million. Uh, we're working with JLG also, uh, and JE Dunn, who, uh, originally created our Caris Building, our education building. On the next slide, you'll see, um, we've been able to raise one point three, uh, with another hundred thousand pending, so, uh, that, that brings us to you, uh, in requesting. You know, if you wanted to, to match Dunn or really wanted to kick it out of the park and, uh, compete with McKenzie, uh, because McKenzie said, oh, if Dunn's doing that, we have to beat them. So, hey, you guys can go ahead and beat McKenzie. I'm just putting it out there. Uh, so that's, that's, that was, that's what brings us here, um, is the education for our kids and, and our request to, to help take care of your Dickinson kids that are with us. You can see here, um, our kids at work, um, in the classrooms that we have. I don't know, that, that picture in the middle there, if my office had that window view, I'd, I'd probably never get anything done, let's be honest, but, um, it's a beautiful building and, um, and it will be a beautiful addition for our kids to create more space and do more appropriate learning. I want to thank you for your time. I'm open to any questions. Uh, I ran through that because I know it's been a long morning for you all, so, um, I did bring some additional, you know, reading propaganda if you're interested.
Thank you. What's the projected, uh, timeline for start of construction?
Yep, hoping to break ground in, um, in twenty-six and then complete December twenty-six.
Yeah, the, the meetings are going well, uh, that both architect and, and construction are staying on, on budget. We were picking colors and carpets yesterday, so that was very exciting. Uh, things are, things are definitely in, in process here.
What's the age group that are out of, out there? Is it like fourteen to eighteen or?
Twelve to seventeen.
Twelve to seventeen? So no independent living or anything like that?
We do, uh, we do a lot of independent groups, uh, with our kids. Like, just this week, they went into a coffee shop in town and they, um, did a mock interview with one of our business owners, and so they were able to learn, like, what questions do you ask? Um, she asked questions about the resume. Um, they go to banks, um, we have people come in and speak. So we do a lot of independent living groups, uh, and actually, when they turn eighteen, there's a program with Youth Works where our trafficked youth are able to, uh, attain an apartment that Youth Works will help them with, and we work very closely with, with Youth Works, and so, um, they're involved with our kids too, so it's, it's an easy opportunity for a transition that way.
And you don't have emergency beds open? They're all filled? You do?
We do. We do, um, the Thirty-Day Placement is what it's called, so we take emergency placements. I would invite anybody out if you ever wanted to come and take a tour. Um, I'd throw you on a horse, and I'll just go, only if you wanted. Wayne's a friend of ours.
And you, you receive no support even though you're in the education? It's all independent, so? I'm taxpayer support is what I?
Yeah, we, we, we take tuition from their homeschools. Um, we charge homeschool tuition, uh, to come to us, and then the state reimburses us Medicaid and, um, and, uh, fee for service. So we fundraise roughly thirty-five, forty percent of our budget every year.
Of your operations.
And, and you take students from Department of Corrections, Department of Social Services, other states?
Yeah, Division of Juvenile Services, Human Service Zones, private, they're kind of like private placements, uh, where parents maintain custody. We have taken kids from Wisconsin. Um, our census isn't full, and Wisconsin, um, found us actually looking at trafficked youth programs, um, and so we contract with them, and, and I think currently we have two Wisconsin kids.
Do you get often self-pay, or is it?
No, we don't, we can't accept self, private pay.
You can't?
No. So the kids who come that are still with their parents, uh, they have to be Medicaid-eligible. So that's, we get Medicaid, um, payments and then?
Okay.
Fee for service, yeah. We can't take private pay at our, at our level of care.
It would be insurance that would pay that?
At Medicaid.
Medicaid, okay.
Yep. Yep, we can't take private insurance.
And you're currently schooling everybody at the facility? Anybody still in town going to school?
No, no, we, um, when we opened our own school, all of our kids came on campus, which is wonderful for our kids and for our staff because if something happens in the classroom, I mean, you've got four clinicians and, you know, ninety-seven other people who can provide immediate assistance to, to get that youth back in control of himself and, and get them back ready to learn. Uh, we're fortunate that we sit on thirteen-hundred acres, so if a kid had a bad phone call last night with his mom, you know, that's, school is really not high on their list, right? So we can take them out of school and we can take a walk. We can go see the dogs, we can pet the horses. Um, we have our own GED site on campus, so if Suzie had, um, found out Uncle Jerry died last night, you don't have to take your test the next day. We can take it whenever you're ready, um, so it provides us with so much flexibility.
And the structure follows over from their living to the school?
Yes.
Same structure?
Incredible story.
It's good stuff.
It is. I think what we could do is, we have our budgeting meeting on the sixteenth. We could take this request, uh, forward to that date unless the group wants to make some kind of immediate decision, because we do have, uh, a number of other, um, I don't know how to best describe them, but service-related entities that, um, also, um, you know, request and some receive funds, um, that kind of deal. So I don't know what, what's your wishes?
I'd agree with that. I would think we should, uh, maybe, I mean, we've, we've got this list to consider, um, and they could be added to that or not, but, um, yeah, we have all sorts of considerations, um, for the sixteenth.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
And thank you for the work you're doing.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Decker.
I can go without it, doesn't matter. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Emergency Manager, Elena Decker. Um, community lifelines are stable. Trust me, they're green on my screen, so, just, um, and then for August, fire departments, we're looking at about sixty-nine calls total, not as many controlled burns as I was expecting since we lifted the restriction, but, um, it is what it is. Nineteen controlled burns, ten gas leaks, two bonfires, three brush fires, three vehicle fires, three reports of smoke smells, four structure fires, and then twenty-five just miscellaneous, usually, um, alarms and various other, um, calls for service. September is National Preparedness Month, so, um, the theme this year is preparedness starts at home. So we like to encourage everybody to kind of take their own safety into their own hands and start preparing for any disasters that may happen. Things that Ready.gov recommends for starting at home is to know your risks. We are updating the multi-hazard plans, so once that comes out, we're going to have a good framework of risks that we, we think could really impact Stark County, so that's a good starting point. Encourage you to make a family emergency plan, and that involves, um, knowing who, who your communications should be, who, where you'll be going if something happens, what kind of supplies you'll be bringing, and other things like that. Encourage you to build an emergency supply kit with ninety-six hours of supplies in that, and that does include considering your pets as well, and then getting involved in community, your community by taking actions. I am looking at doing a, um, trial run of our CERT program, possibly through our Rotary, kind of using them as my, my test group to see what works, what doesn't work, and hopefully be a good source of, uh, word of mouth for other people to hopefully be interested in the program. I'm hoping to get that kick-started in October by, if possible, so. Other than that, pretty quick for me this month, but I'll take any questions.
Any questions, comments? Thank you.
Yep, and then I had on there as well, the dispatch requests, which Lieutenant Handel is here to kind of pick that up, so I'll let him take over.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elena, and good morning, uh, Chairman, Master Commissioners. Lieutenant Mike Handel phoned the police department, uh, representing our, uh, nine-one-one dispatch center. This morning, I am in front of you to, uh, see if we can, um, talk about a letter of support, uh, going into budgets, uh, season here, both with the city and the county, uh, looking to expand our dispatch center by, uh, two additional staff, uh, two additional, uh, dispatchers, uh, for our PSAP center. Um, as, as you guys are aware of, but, uh, for the public, that might not be, um, the nine-one-one center is, is, uh, a city-county partnership, so since we do respond to, or we answer nine-one-one calls, non-emergency calls for police, fire, and EMS, uh, within Stark County, uh, we do have that partnership, so obviously if we, uh, if, if we change metrics on one end, the other entity has to be aware of it too, so that's why we're asking for, uh, for some, uh, su- support with that. Our current staffing level is, uh, fourteen dispatchers plus, uh, one center supervisor. Typically, what we, uh, what we've been operating on, uh, for minimums, we, we typically have at least three dispatchers on staff during, during the day shift, as usually the higher influx of times that we see both non-emergency business calls, um, and then the, the emergency calls that come in throughout the, the course of the day shift. Uh, night shift, we, we have been getting by somewhat, has staffing, at least minimum staffing of, of two dispatchers for, for the night shift. But what we've been typically seeing now, especially in recent years, is that, that level of staffing, uh, just doesn't seem to be, um, holding well for us. Uh, we're, we're usually always at minimums. For example, when I did, uh, pulled some data, July twenty-twenty-five, uh, of the thirty-one days in July, we were staffed, uh, twenty-two of those days at minimum, and all that takes is for one dispatcher to call out sick, um, uh, we might have CERT denying some trainings and vacations just to be able to get that covered, um, and if it goes any bit further than that, then we're, we're in some real trouble. And, and the problem with nine-one-one dispatch centers, it's not like a restaurant where the kitchen staff is short-staffed and they just flip the sign on the, on the window saying we're closed for the day. We, we, we have to continue to answer those calls. So, um, so what we're trying to do is, uh, come up with some metrics and, um, uh, so, some, uh, justification as, as to why we need to supplement the staff just a little bit so we're, we're not running so critical all the time. Uh, we, we are perfectly aware of the budget scrutiny that, that entities are, are under, uh, within the state, so, uh, we want to ensure, uh, both you and the public that this, this ask is, is a much-needed ask. Um, the company, what we're seeing is the complexity of calls, especially in the last, uh, the last, uh, several years, um, through, uh, a multitude of, of different things. Um, the, uh, issues that we're having with, with translating foreign language when, when we have, you know, Spanish speakers calling in, uh, there's a, a definite time commitment to the nine-one-one dispatcher that has to take those calls and, and get either translation service, um, so our dispatches are under, under, you know, additional stress and expectation to be able to accomplish those types of calls. The Internet of Things, the IOT is what they call it, that, that's becoming more prevalent with the last several years, so that's, uh, your, all your sensors, so if you get in a car crash, uh, or you report something by Sirius XM or anything like that, these are the Internet of Things that are becoming more prevalent that is also now affecting our dispatch staff. More added work for them, um, so as you can see, their, their normal day from several years ago is now compounded with different tasks and, and sensors to monitor and... So it, having that minimum staffing is, again, more burdensome than, than having another ones, another additional staff. One of the highlights that, that maybe this, this will help paint the picture, probably the proudest I've ever been of, of our dispatchers was a couple of years ago when we had a unfortunate fatal crash out on the interstate during, during a fog event in the morning, where, or a motorist was ultimately rear-ended a semi that had jackknifed on there. We had two dispatchers on staff at the time, they did phenomenal, I, I was so proud of them, the, the, with getting the rescue squad and, you know, High Patrol Sheriff's Department, all the entities organized in order to be able to mitigate that situation. However, it was attributed very much so to their skill and talent, but a lot by luck. If, if something else had popped off at the same time, they really would have been stretched to their, to their max. And having an additional person in that chair, another additional staff member, would, would have definitely helped out in that situation. And we're seeing more and more of those types of complex situations. So we're, we basically just, again, not, not really seeing much for people on the bench anymore. We're, we're currently down two dispatchers plus a third one, just put in a notice of her retirement, so we're gonna be down three, and we have one in training right now, so we are stretched really thin, which is, is really highlighting the, the real importance to at least get a few more people on the bench per, so to say, so we, we can at least absorb these situations when we have either somebody out on extended sick leave or added trainings. We also have, on our, on our roadmap for the dispatch center, we've been intending to implement a, a true quality control program, something that's most centers, larger centers incorporate, so we're ensuring quality service to the public. But that takes our mid-level managers and our PSAP director, takes them to be able to run that program effectively, requires them to be off of the floor to be able to, to do that, and also continuing education for, for the dispatchers. That's another task that they're assigned, but when we're forced into minimum staffing, that pulls them out of that role and we can't accomplish, you know, our, our programs that we want to, like for, for quality assurance and, and extended trainings for, for the rest of the dispatch. So it's, it's a bit of a perfect storm. So that's some anecdotal evidence, but I did, I know numbers are really important and to really highlight what it is. We have also included a, a more subjective look at where we should be at in terms of staffing, and that's included in your packet too. We, we're members of the, the National Emergency Number Association, NINA, and that organization has provided a, basically like a calculator. They, they take a lot of the guesswork out of what a number should be for, for a, a agency our size or I guess population base of our size within the county. And they extrapolate that out, taking into consideration just the different tasks that our dispatchers here are uniquely faced with. So if, using their, their calculus there, they are actually recommending we, we should be staffed at sixteen-point-six-seven. So we are short by, by two according to their standards, so that would be, I guess, additional, I guess, reasoning why, why this request is, is much needed. And then the bottom-line portion of it, I know that, that the big question is, is ultimately, is ultimately the cost associated with that. Since there is a, going into twenty-twenty-six, I believe the county shares, the, the current delta is about thirty-seven percent, the, the city would be the sixty-three, yeah, my math's a little off there, but. And since, so that, that's almost kind of like a buy-one-get-one type of situation here, but we'd be looking at, for, for the county, an approximate, rough math before any COLA increases for next year, we're looking at about an approximate fifty-eight thousand dollar increase on, on the county side going into next year, and then, you know, with the potential of, if there's any COLA increases that the city would, would encumber upon that. And so, yeah, so we, we would definitely, we, we appreciate the county partnership that we have. It's, it's been really nice working with, especially Commissioner Claris on, on the new Public Safety Advisory Committee that we've established. So we're, we, we really appreciate the, the teamwork involved with that, and based on that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
So the fifty-eight thousand would be all in?
That would, that would be all in for.
Retirement, all that?
Yes.
Chairman, if I may, the, one thing Mike didn't touch on, and I think is probably a good example, is Richerton, last month, we had a twelve-hour ordeal there, and you can imagine that, you know, what that, the, the burden that puts on dispatch, and we have more and more of those things, type things happening. Not only that, you know, personally, and some of you guys will like this scenario, but imagine being in our shoes and I, I call for help and get my ass kicked and there's nobody, no answer on the radio, you know? Imagine you have a loved one that's, you know, God forbid, dying and you call nine-one-one and no one answers. I mean, these are things that could potentially happen, and, and I think this is extremely imperative to put this in place before next June, July hit when we have all hell break out in our community here, with the opening of the Presidential Library and all that other stuff going on, so. Right, as it stands right now, those ambulances are going non-stop. The amount of calls are, are insane, and not only that, we have days like last Wednesday when we have to start taking accidents and things for the police department because they are getting completely pounded. Mike was out taking calls that day, I believe, as well, so. I mean, it's, it's a lot worse than I think you guys know, and, you know, that starts with dispatch, so.
Yeah, thank you for that Sheriff. And, again, I, I don't want to discount the, the capabilities of our dispatchers because they are phenomenal. We have, we have phenomenal employees in that dispatch center, they, they're extremely dedicated, they're extremely talented, and I, I stand in there sometimes when everything's going crazy, and I, I definitely do not belong in the chair. I'd much rather be out on the street, I don't know how they do it, but they, but they're able to get it done. But at the same time, I think we have, we have the propensity for burnout at that rate, you know, if they're constantly operating at that level without, you know, some additional staffing in, in, in those chairs to assist with all this other stuff that's, that's coming online.
And your goal is to fill these positions immediately?
In a perfect world, that would be the case. Like I said, we're, we're two to three dispatchers down, and one's currently in training right now. Our training typically is about fourteen weeks, plus an additional four to five of, I would say, like a observation type of thing before we'd actually consider them, you know, fully able to be on their own. And we, we were a little limited on how many people we can train at once, simply because the limitations of the number of trainers and just, just the space that we have to do it. So ideally, even if we'd want to stretch this out, you know, probably possibly one right after the first of the year, and then probably quarter two would probably be when we could advertise and potentially fill the, the second position realistically.
So you have no current open recs or for, for people to apply?
We're, we're actually in the interview process right now, the, I believe it closes on the ninth, or closed. We, we have, we actually have quite a bit of interest this, this go-around, which is very comforting. Typically, these, these, the spot is somewhat difficult to fill because it does take a unique person that's able to work under, under pressure and able to multitask. But that is reassuring to see the number that we had apply this go-around, so we're hoping to be able to at least get a couple of these spots filled.
So that January is somebody ready to hit the ground running, right?
Potentially, yes, we have two spots to fill from, just, just to bring us up to current, and then if we add these two additional, actually three, we, we have three spots to fill this, just off of this, this year, and then if we add these two additional, that, that's technically five new faces that we'll be seeing within our walls here in the, in the next short amount, so.
Well, for me, I'm, obviously, I'm in favor of this, I mean, you have to, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, you have to fill those seats. And for us, it's a little, you know, we have our situation, all these, these dollars come from our nine-one-one fees, right? Yeah, and, and that fund is getting a bit taxed at this point, so it's, it's kind of all timely with this proper, or a sales tax conversation. But we just have to figure out a way to do it. Did you shed a little bit of light on that?
Financial, so as far as the nine-one-one dollar size, this would up that budget to about three-hundred-and-seventeen, and I think we average sometimes around between three-twenty to three-sixty, depending, some months are a little better for some reason. So it is getting to that point where we're kind of hitting the max of those nine-one-one dollars. I'm, I'm glad people are, we're talking about the sales tax, I think the, the sales tax has an opportunity to maybe offset some of the salary costs, and then I can start using nine-one-one dollars for infrastructure-related projects for dispatch.
Yeah, because, I mean, on top of salaries, we pay for the equipment.
Yep.
Or a portion of the equipment as well, which is constantly being upgraded and whatnot, so.
Yep, they go through a lot of upgrades, the contracts are costly, there's gonna be a console upgrade expected, I think, by twenty-thirty. So we're kind of starting to prepare for that and save for that. And that's five councils we'll have to replace, so.
Is there any new technology coming out that we foresee? I know additional headcount all the time is, you know, the, the amount of calls, we see crime up. Corey tells us it's up because we don't see it, but.
Yes.
But, yeah, is there some kind of new technology that could help in dispatching?
Yes, Commissioner White, that's a really good question. We're actually in, in the midst of it, trying, trying to offset a little bit of the, the workload. There's a lot of AI stuff that's on the horizon. Part of the big-time constraints that, that I alluded to earlier with, with even the translation, so if, if we have a Spanish speaker call in, we have this new module that, that the PSAC had, had approved at a prior meeting here to use some nine-one-one dollars to install it. It's, it's an integration to our rapid SOS system. It's a web-based system that can, that's tied into our phone lines and it can detect not only just, just English text and then just using AI to get in an approximation of what the call's about, so it gives like a call sentiment analysis. But additionally, it can also detect forty-two different languages, so if we do have somebody that's calling in, you know, even, you know, Korean, and we'd be, it'd be able to detect and print off a text translation as far as what the caller's doing. So it'll definitely help, instead of having to phone into our language line, which is phoning into another human being, get them in, in a conference call, we'd be, we'd immediately start seeing that on our screens as far as what that individual would be reporting. And we'd be able to translate back through, it'd basically just be the reverse, we'd type, type a response out and it would send it back. So we are trying to leverage technology as best we can, there's that on the horizon, there's some other AI stuff, I don't think we're quite there yet, but it can, it's, it's more like talk, in, in non-emergency situations for, you know, reporting a vandalism or something like that, there, there is some potential on the horizon that, that can be more AI-driven and, and to be able to gather that data and then make it available for dispatch, I don't think we're quite there yet, but we're trying to leverage technology as much as we can.
As we talk about fatigue and, and stuff like that, I, I understand them dispatch centers, it's, there's a high burnout risk rate, a lot of overtime, people missing shifts sometimes, it's not here, I've just, over the past, I've heard this. You know, we're, computers don't need bathroom breaks and don't get burned out.
Exactly.
So, don't call in with a cold. So, that's all I have.
Anything else? Thoughts? Is this another item we put in our budget process for the sixteenth, or what are your thoughts?
They're asking for a letter of support.
Yes.
To go forward with this in your budget, when, when's the Dickon, or City of Dickinson's budget meeting?
I believe their first reading's coming up here really soon, so I, I think it was just a matter of getting some written handshake agreement here that, that since it is affecting both entities, that, that if you're supportive of this, this action, they would, we would include that.
I think we did something similar with the dispatch center when they were upgrading that, right?
Well, I would offer the motion to, to execute the letter of support in favor of this.
I'd second that because I've been on the other end of the phone, radio there, and if you call in and you might not have a second chance to repeat, so we definitely need dispatchers in there.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I just want to add it into the twenty-sixth's budget.
Yeah, I think so, yep.
Okay.
All right, next. Opioid settlement, I think Amanda has left, you have the data in front of you. Basically, her recommendation is that we opt in to the settlement. Anybody have any questions?
He's looking for a motion?
Yes.
We'll make the motion to opt in to the opioid settlement.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Franchuk, any other discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Cancelled checks you have in front of you, I'll let Karen take this.
Okay, this is just a list of checks that need to be cancelled that are over when you're old, I just need the Commissioner's approval to move forward with cancelling them.
Make the motion to cancel the checks.
I'll have a second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Claris, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Gladstone Fire Truck request you have in front of you, a breakdown and a copy of the minutes from last September. So their, their request is for us to fund what we agreed to fund.
So initially, the Commission did the pledge of up to eighty-three-four-forty. They did get some additional funding, and the final ask is sixty-seven-three-forty. And I'm just looking for the Commission to release those funds so that they can get their truck.
Make the motion to release the sixty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars to the Gladstone Fire Department.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. We'll take roll call vote, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Years of service health insurance discussion. Commissioner White, I think you asked to bring this forward.
Yeah, so there's been some discussion, we, when we went to, had that little committee that we started when we were going through the pay structure. Now, this was brought up, we, we decided to table it a little bit, and it's, it's come back a little bit since we have got rid of longevity, so to have some kind of discussion or start a discussion on this, open to some feedback. I know I talked with Karen and Joanna a little bit about it, and they've, have, have done some research and, and have some feedback as well, possibly. Anything? Did you send something out yesterday on that?
Yes, so what I sent to the Commission was just kind of a breakdown of what our, our current costs are based on September's bill. Just to show what we're paying cost-share-wise for Stark County, what the employee share is, how many employees do we have in our plans, whether it's high deductible or the, you know, the standard plan, what our HSA match is, et cetera. So we currently have seventy-eight employees on one of the Stark County Health Plan options, and then out of, you know, with those seventy-eight employees, there is a hundred-and-eighty-one members covered. So their, their families and stuff like that. Stark currently pays ninety percent of the standard, standard plan single and eighty percent of the other standard plans. And then we pay a hundred percent of the high deductible standard plans, plus we pay an HSA match, so that's what we're currently at. The other part that I have on here is kind of what it, what is that costing us? So, you know, based on this September month, because we've had some people come off and come on, you know, as employment changes, but most current data says that Stark's total dollar amount that that costs us for a year is, you know, for this year is one-point-zero-five-six million. The employee dollar amount that costs the employees was a hundred-and-eighty-one thousand for the year. I estimate we'll probably, we're kind of waiting for that number to see if we can get our health, what our insurance increase is gonna be. So I estimated just a nine percent, just to give us an idea of what we're looking at for twenty-twenty-six as it currently sits.
So the, the line item, one, one oh five six two ten, that's your estimated total year, not year-to-date, or is it?
That's a total year.
Yes.
Yeah, that's twelve months at like this September, using this September, yeah.
Got it.
We have had some employees come off and some. We have had some employees come off and some come on, turnover.
So with the longevity, we had a discussion, I think the average, average, did we say was seven point eight years? Lana?
Yeah, about eight years, yeah.
Within the county that we looked at, we took some others off of that, elected officials and, you know, recently of Al's retirement and others' retirement, so I don't think as a group, we're interested, the longevity was a retention tool, maybe when it first started out it was, that going forward, there's a lot of alternative strategies for retention to keep people in onboard as well. So one would be the HSA, looking at the HSA, what we can contribute to it, some would be also looking at the employee's contribution towards the insurance as well over a projected period of time, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year period. So this was a discussion that we had previously this year before we put our committee together. It was in it, we tabled it to try to get some of this other stuff done, and this is just to revisit this and see what others, the feedback is.
So on the longevity spreadsheet, the number in blue would be the, our obligation for 2025 longevity, as it current sits, that is a program that is not being extended into twenty-six.
I believe so.
I'll say, these are Joetta's sheets, so she might want to...
Hi, Joetta Piercey, Human Resources Director. So if you're looking on the sheet, budget worksheet there, it says, yeah, those, that's the length of service spreadsheet, and so this year we'll be paying out approximately twenty-two thousand, two hundred and one dollars in longevity. And what we had discussed, we had looked at some different options when we were looking at replacing this, more along the lines of realizing that people, you know, an average career span is more closer to twenty years, not forty years type of a thing, and our current longevity plan was created to really start, you know, giving meaningful numbers out to people when they hit twenty years. So what we were trying to accomplish was paying more in their first, you know, five through twenty years. We had done some different options with replacing it with just a different money, but I think you guys are interested more in options four and five, which would be decreasing insurance premiums every five years. There's, option four is decreasing that two and a half percent. Option five is decreasing five percent every five years. And so what that does is, we, I track the employee benefit years five through twenty, the two and a half percent would be twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, but the five percent would be forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, and that's more in line with what we're paying over a forty-four-year span now.
And what is the tax, so on longevity, say, I'm eligible for two hundred bucks, what is that percentage in tax at the end of the year when I get that two hundred bucks?
It's whatever their payroll tax is.
What, is it higher than normal payroll tax, correct?
It's included in their payroll, so it's, it's not a bonus tax or anything along that line.
And then for, you know, lowering my insurance, what I pay for insurance, that's no tax implication to me, though.
Correct, it would actually, you know, it would save in taxes essentially, because the county wouldn't have to pay taxes, nor would the employee.
Okay.
So on four and five, I'm trying to, oh, got it, found it, thank you.
So I'll just kind of go through this a little bit. The chart has, you know, zero through four years, they would pay the normal percentage that you guys set, the employee would, and then years five through nine, it would, let's just take option, option four, it decreases two and a half percent, so they'd be responsible to pay the seventeen and a half percent at this time, and that six sixty-four eleven would be their savings, and this is all on a family premium. The chart right below it is employee-only premium, so it's a lot less than the family, of course. And then I just made the assumption that after twenty years of service, they probably wouldn't have a family to cover anymore, and so I just changed that to employee plus spouse. And then the employee benefit column is what the savings for them would be over that period of time. I did this out up to forty-four years because that's our current longest length of service employee that we have.
But your chart isn't talking about like the annual increases in insurance costs, right?
This is our current insurance cost at this time that we know about.
But ten years from now, we're not going to be at those costs.
Two years from now, we're not going to be at those costs.
One year from now, we're not going to be at this cost.
Yeah. So it's not including anything inflationary in there?
No, no.
So under plan four, our additional expense estimated would be the eighty-nine thousand?
Over forty, over, for one employee, if they were here forty-four years, yeah.
So what's the cost annualized?
So, years, depends what year they're here, so years five through nine, it would be six hundred and sixty-four eleven a year.
Per, per any employee in the five to nine category?
In the family plan, yeah.
And if we go to option five, that cost basically doubles because of two and a half to five percent?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I think you kind of want to look at what, what is your goal here? With the five percent decrease, you know, they wouldn't pay any premium if they'd been here twenty years, they'd have to be here twenty years to pay no premium. And then, of course, it would be less for employee only, they would be here ten years and pay no premium.
Yeah, because it started at ninety.
Yep, mm-hmm.
And we're going to pay for this, huh?
That's kind of where our committee was at, because right now, we're only paying, you know, twenty-two thousand in longevity, and there isn't really anything that we could replace it with that was similar to that, so we decided, you know, to table it.
Yeah, well, I get that. I think the, the insurance lane has much more attraction in retention than the longevity stuff that's in front of me, but we still have to pay for it, so.
Yeah, and there's other, other things, too, that, you know, this was, the insurance was one of them, more of a contribution to an HSA would be something.
Essentially, that's what we would have to do if we did the insurance route, because, you know, you have zero premium if you're on the high deductible health plan right now, so it would be a contribution into your HSA instead of a premium deduction.
And I think this is just kind of something for the commission to think over, like what you're open to, so that we can have more discussions about this on the sixteenth.
Mm-hmm. And I should have...
And we should have actual numbers.
By next week, I should have some insurance numbers, yeah.
Any other thoughts? So now you've got this in your homework pile, study it and bring it for discussion potentially on the sixteenth. Thank you.
And just one other thing, I did look at some of, last weekend I sat down and looked up some of this. I know some counties and other places also let employees convert sick leave into extra compensation as well. So there was a lot of different things out there, it varies throughout the entire country, so, but there was a lot of stuff towards, geared towards retirement and some retirement plans as well, so I think there's some options out there.
Okay, anything else? Do we have anybody on public comments? I don't believe we do, either on the phone or in person. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
By Commissioner White?
Second.
By Commissioner Claris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Well, you guys are all here, do you want...